The regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for September 2nd, 2020. Sheri, would you take role, please?
Commissioner Cholosie?
Here.
Vice Chair Nolan?
Here.
Commissioner Lottis?
Here.
Commissioner Trent?
Here.
Commissioner Swift?
Here.
All in attendance.
Excellent, okay. And is there anyone in the council chambers? No, Lucas, looks like you're in your office.
Um.
Oops.
Oh, there we are, okay. Well, we have a, we have a flag. Let's, uh, let's do the pledge of allegiance. Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic. For which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Next on the agenda is public communications. The time set aside during the Planning Commission meeting for members of the public to address the Planning Commission meeting on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. And I understand that we have no communication from the public. Lucas or Sheri?
Uh, not at this, not for this venture. There is public comment regarding one of the items on the agenda.
For item two, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, then we'll move on to the consent item. The minutes of the regular meeting of August 19th. Any adds or changes or deletions from any of the commissioners? Jake, this is one you'll recuse yourself on, or you'll abstain.
Understood.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, please go ahead.
That we, um, adopt the Ojai Planning Commission meetings from the August 19th, 2020 meeting.
Okay.
Second.
Second, thank you very much. Any discussion? Sheri, your roll call, please.
Cholosie?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Lottis?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Swift?
Okay, super. Uh, next is disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. John, would you like to start?
Uh, yeah, I did go by the, uh, proposed, um, site of the, the property at, uh, 1201 San Ramon.
And no ex parte contacts?
Nope.
Okay. Um, Commissioner Nolan?
I also visited the site and had no ex parte contents, contact.
Uh, Commissioner Lottis?
If it is, also, I visited the site and had no ex, I had no ex parte comments.
Okay, and Commissioner Swift?
I also visited and had no, no running with an ex parte.
Okay, and I visited the site as well, had no ex parte contacts, but for purposes of full disclosure, the applicant in this case has done work for me before. I had, uh, some remodeling work done on my house in 2017 and 18, both sides of and during the Thomas fire. Um, and so we are, I would say, pretty well acquainted. Um, but we're not anything more than that, um, for any purposes of the Planning Commission.
Right.
Okay, and, uh, then we'll move on to item two, our public hearing item. Lucas, would you lead us through that, please?
Yeah, sure, so, um, good evening, commissioners. My name is Lucas Seibert. For our new commissioner, Commissioner Swift, um, I am the Community Development Manager here with the Community Development Department. The item before you tonight is a public hearing item. It is a new or proposed two-story, single-family residence located at 1201 San Ramon Way. Um, it's at the end of the cul-de-sac for San Ramon Way. It sounds like the commission, um, sounds like all the commissioners were able to at least drive, uh, to the end of that cul-de-sac and see where that vacant lot is located at. Uh, the, the proposal before, before the commission tonight, let me just go into a little bit of background regarding the site, and I would even say regarding this area. The, uh, the site is currently vacant. It is considered a legal non-conforming lot, and it's non-conforming by, by way of a substandard square footage and a substandard width. However, because the lot was, and this is pursuant to, um, our municipal code, because the lot itself was, um, uh, because the lot itself was, um, lost my turn of thought here. Oh, because the lot itself was a part of a subdivision and annexation in the, uh, late seventies, early eighties, um, it is, it, it meets the, the test in terms of it being, um, considered non-conforming, um, and able to be developed upon. So, and it's interesting, because this is actually the last lot of this 14-lot subdivision that is vacant and proposed to be developed upon, developed upon. Um, as I said before, the, the, the proposal is a two-story addition or a two-story home. The height of this is actually proposed to be 26 feet 2 inches, which is a foot 2 inches above what the maximum height allowance would, uh, allow for. However, there is a provision within the Ojai Municipal Code which allows for, um, the height within this zoning district to be exceeded, uh, barring there is justification and, uh, Planning Commission consideration and approval for that height, uh, increase. So that's before the commission tonight as well. The, the home itself is proposed to be approximately 2,600 square feet in size. It will include, and is proposed to include, an ADU on the second story. That ADU or accessory dwelling unit is roughly 700 square feet in area and, um, will provide a separate access via staircase along that southern, um, elevation for the home. It is going to have, is proposed to have a side entry garage, two-car, two-car garage versus a front entry, um, providing direct access along San Ramon, um, still being accessed along San Ramon, but instead you'll have kind of what is considered a, a tuck-in or, or wraparound, uh, driveway that then allows access to that garage. Um, let's see. Oh, uh, from a design standpoint, the house is a, I would call it a Craftsman, and it's provided in the Agenda reported Craftsman, um, style-inspired, uh, design, if you will. It contains wood, wood siding, uh, and, um, and rock, rock columns essentially is what we're looking at here, stone columns. Uh, so that's, that's where we're looking for that in, in terms of the inspiration there. The, um, there was a public comment letter that was submitted and provided to the commission, uh, prior to this, this meeting, and the, the public comment was received by the, from the owner of the property to the south. And they, in their letter, it summarized, it's basically expressing concern regarding, um, view shed to the mountains, um, and, and visibility being blocked by this new single-family residence. And I, I will have to say that in terms of looking up, um, any sort of provisions that we may have in the code in terms of the protection of view sheds, uh, our Ojai Municipal Code does not have any sort of provisions that would, would govern that. I've seen that from a CCNR standpoint, our covenant conditions and restrictions, which is typical for, um, HOAs, homeowners associations that you would, you would tend to see, but not, not in terms of what we have in our, um, municipal code. So, um, but I wanted to at least let you know that that was, uh, some of the concerns that, um, this, this property entered to the south was expressing, uh, in terms of, of consent. With that, staff does recommend approval of this, um, proposed two-story, new, single-family, um, residence home located at 1201 San Ramon. Um, if the commission has any questions of staff, I could certainly, um, answer them at this time. I don't have a, a site plan to pull up, but if you want, if, if during this conversation, um, wanted to turn to a site plan, I could, I could pull up a site plan for us to.
Well, we each, we each have one as well.
Okay.
Yes, each, each commissioner was provided it, but it may be actually be more for the public purpose than.
Oh, that's true, yeah, okay. Um, any questions of staff?
I have a question.
Yes, Commissioner Nolan?
Yes, uh, thank you. Um, Lucas, I'm wondering if you could just, um, go over this a little bit more, and this has to do in regards to the height of the building. Um, I know that they're, you know, a little bit over the height, and it was my understanding that, you know, if it was an architectural feature, then you certainly could go up to 30 feet if it got approved. Um, but I believe you said something that in this zone, or they were allowed to do that? Or maybe I misunderstood what you said.
Right, yeah, so the, the height limitation is allowed to be exceeded based on, on this zone. However, it provides the, the need for planning commission approval. And in this, in this case, um, I had asked the applicant to identify if there were other examples within this 14-lot subdivision that would have allowed for and had a height, um, exception to the rule, um, above 25 feet. And we don't have to go any further than the lot directly across the street, which is 1202 San Ramon Way. That lot, um, has a height of roughly 27 feet in height from the top of the ridge.
Okay, I noticed there's also a two-story directly to the south of 1203, I guess it's 1205 San Ramon, and that's a two-story. Um, is that also within 25 feet height, or is it taller?
That one I was not able to, so we were looking to find plans to provide, um, specific clarification rather than going out and measuring everybody's.
Ah, okay, sure.
The one right across the street, which is 1202, was able to, we were able to find, um, plans that provided us with that height, uh, clarification.
Okay, uh, I noticed also you said that the lot was substandard size. When I looked at the plat, it looked like it was a 10,000-square-foot parcel, but the front of it's been eaten away by a street easement. Is that what makes it substandard's area?
Correct, so in our, in our code, in the Ojai Municipal Code, we have a definition for lot area, or lot coverage, I believe is the correct term here. With lot coverage, um, there's a specific provision within there that, um, speaks to removing, uh, easements which do not, um, directly impact and only impact or provide access, uh, for that specific, uh, lot. So in the case of the easement along the eastern edge of this lot that we're talking about, there's kind of a half-moon carved area, uh, that is an easement, and that provides, that provides, um, this, a portion for the cul-de-sac, for the street, as well as for the sidewalk that we're seeing there as well. And it carves itself around the edge of that sidewalk, the easement does. Uh, we've had that plotted and, and referenced and, and verified. Uh, and so because of that, and because of the way in which our definition reads, we then pull that square footage out, which is roughly 2,900 square feet in area, and we, per our code, we cannot count that towards the total lot area as it, as it works for this, for the development on this lot.
So in this case, then, the lot coverage is the footprint of the house and driveway or whatever over 8,100 square feet, or the 7,100 square feet?
Well.
Eighty-nine hundred.
Yeah, it's eighty-nine, it would actually end up being eighty-nine.
Well, I'm sorry, you, okay, you said 2,900 square feet was the easement?
Yeah, let me double-check that.
That's fine. Um, are there, yeah, I see total lot size.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the one is just a little over 1,000 square.
A little over 1,000, okay, right, okay, that, that makes up the 10,000 square feet. Um, are there other questions? I have a couple.
Just.
Yes, Commissioner Lottis?
Um, so, um, so the sidewalk and the curb are there, and I know they're going to do a new driveway curb cut, but, so, is, is, I mean, it's odd that the property lines go out past the current sidewalk and curb and into the street, but, um, are they, are they changing that existing sidewalk and curb, or is that essentially staying there, other than for the driveway curb cut?
Sidewalk, the sidewalk will remain as is, but the, the, um, the issue is the access, the, um, the curb cut, it doesn't meet current standards. So, in, in conversations with the Public Works Department, they're gonna need to bring that into compliance with current standards.
Okay, and, um, as a follow-up to Commissioner Nolan's question about the height, um, when the applicant applies for something like this, do we have any, um, uh, uh, part of the, their application that asks them to justify the, the additional height? Do we have any, I mean, like, why?
Right, so that is the, that is the proverbial question, just because it states in the code that the planning commission can simply approve a height increase doesn't necessarily mean that the planning commission will approve a height increase. I think in this case, if you look at the neighborhood, you'll see that at the very, at the very minimum, um, the lot across the street, which is almost like a mirror image, it also has the same situation in terms of the lot carrying itself out into the, um, the cul-de-sac itself, uh, as, as it, as it projects into the public driveway. Um, in addition to that, there is that height, um, increase, and, and that height increase is up to 20, it's basically 27 feet roughly, give or take a few inches. So they're looking for consistency with what's already, um, within the neighborhood itself. Uh, I asked that same tough, tough question and asked for them to, to provide that clarification, uh, as it relates to, um, the surrounding neighborhood, because if we're looking at houses within that neighborhood that are all sitting at 25 feet, I think the answer is pretty simple, that even staff wouldn't be supporting something like that, um, unless there's additional, uh, clarification and examples within that neighborhood of a height increase. In this case, we're seeing at least one example.
They want to be like the house across the street, that's the justification?
I think it's consistency with the neighborhood, um, yeah, simplicity of it being consistent across the street, yes.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard, uh, there are big houses in that neighborhood for sure, but, um, I wish I knew if it was just the one house that exceeded the height, or if there were other houses, but we don't, we just don't have that information, is what, what you said.
Right.
Right, yeah, the, the clear information is across the street, there could be others. Uh, we just don't have the, the plans to verify that for certain number percent accuracy.
Most of these houses were built before the annexation, I guess.
Well, the annexation occurred at the same time as the subdivision, so it came forward, uh, at the same time.
So just.
Lucas?
Yeah, sorry.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Nolan?
I was gonna say, following up, because I, I, I felt like my question was an answer, but Kathy, thank you for continuing on with that. So essentially, you know, I look in the code, if you have an architectural feature, so you certainly, if the planning commission agrees, can have taller than the 25 feet, maximum 30 feet, but in this case, really, that's not what they, that's not what they're asking me. I mean, in other words, they don't have an architectural feature, it's just, we want to make it taller, we have, um, our first bottom floor is nine feet rather than the traditional eight, it's a two-story house, you consider the foundation and the attic, et cetera. We're up to the 26, um, two, and there's only one other house in the neighborhood that we know of that has the same thing. I just want to be clear on that, yeah.
Yeah, one house has been confirmed.
Okay.
If there's any others, uh, the, the reality is, is that I, I can't say that there absolutely are others.
Yeah, that we know of.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Trent, you had a question? I thought I saw you wave, looking for.
Yeah, yeah, no, I did, I did, quick question. Um, from the, if you look at the, uh, the adjacent house, the one that's at, I believe, 1204, is that right? It was at 1202.
1202 is the one at the other, is across the street, yeah.
It aligns, uh, the lot aligns with the, the neighbor's, um, house, and I was just curious, when looking at the way that this aligns with, uh, 1201, it looks like the garage section is taking up, um, well, it's taking up like half of the front yard of 1201, meaning the visual. So if I was sitting in the front yard of 1201 and I was looking toward the mountains, I would see half of a garage. But I was just wondering if that was, is that, was that, that setback, is that, um, considered? Is that, is that looked at, to have the houses aligned, so there's not necessarily that, that blockage of view?
Okay, so let's, let's talk just briefly about the setbacks. So for, and this is a little bit unusual, I mean, I'm, I mean, this is unusual a lot in terms of it extending into the right-of-way through an easement, um, along that eastern edge. The front yard setback is taken from that property line, not from the edge of that easement. There are no code provisions that, that would require the, um, the, the setback to be taken from that western edge of that easement that we were just talking about a moment ago that's within the, um, public right-of-way for the sidewalk and that, that little hop crescent portion for, um, for the cul-de-sac bolt. Uh, so it, it lends itself to, to be, to appear closer to the street than what you would, you would typically see, um, but it's, it's odd, or it's, it's unique in terms of how that, how that operates, because further to the north, along that same property that we're talking about, so the south side appears closer to the, the north side of that, of that property, if you look at it, the porch is set back further simply because of the, of the way in which the house is designed. But you end up getting a further setback along that northern portion of the, um, of that house. It appears closer, um, and is closer, it doesn't appear, it is closer along that southern side, um, which is where that driveway entry is at. So it, it's, it's a bit of a, of a unique situation, um, in terms of what we're looking at here, an unusual situation, certainly. Uh, but the code, the, the code standard for this is a 20-foot setback to the front. Um, and that's what they're needing as a minimal.
So I guess my question is, does that align with 1202? Is the setback the same as 1202, or is 1202 set back farther?
Yeah, so I, I looked at that, um, because I was curious myself, the, um, the front porch, basically from where the front porch is at to where the edge of sidewalk is at, it's roughly eight feet, um, so you're looking at about an eight-foot setback there. But you've got to also remember, when you're looking at that property just across the street, if we're comparing apples and apples to oranges to oranges here, um, their, their garage is set back significantly. In fact, I think it's either detached or, or, um, located more towards the rear of the property. This one instead, the example that we're looking at here is a proposal, is attached to the, is attached to the house, functions as a part of the, of the residence, um, and is aligned slightly differently. So they've done some slightly different things in terms of orientation for this, for this house on this lot than what's done, um, as, as their counterpart across the street.
So, uh, just a follow-up question with that, then, did, did you discuss with the applicant, um, I mean, okay, so they've got a rear yard setback of 25 feet, um, but did you discuss the, uh, you know, option or idea of sliding the house a little closer to the rear? Uh, maybe they don't meet the rear yard setback then, but it's a little further setback from the street?
So if you're locating it within the rear yard setback, we're running into a variance requirement, or at the very, at the very least, a minor, a minor variance.
Right.
I think, I.
But considering the, um.
Commissioner has talked about those variances before, these are not simple findings to make, and I, I'm trying to steer them away from any sort of variance, uh, requirement in this case.
Well, I'm just, I mean, uh, you know, I think, I think the commi, I mean, I think our goal should be to, um, evaluate the, all the constraints and the opportunities, and, um, you know, if it, if it would appear to be better to slide the house back, I, you know, given that it's, um, a weirdly sized lot and it's got the easement and so forth, I mean, there would probably be, um, supporting justification for that, but I just, I, I was actually asking the question to see if you had talked about it with the applicant at all.
We, we had discussed it, or I would say, early on and probably towards the end, um, prior to them, to this, this item being, um, being agendized. Uh, in the beginning, simply because we were, we were looking and trying to understand the full gamut of, of what this proposal entails, and what standards are being met, what standards are not being met. Um, once, once the dust settled, then we started looking at, well, wait a minute, how is the context of this home, uh, related to the rest of the neighborhood? And there is examples of, while if you look at the, the mirrored example across the street, there is a setback of roughly eight feet, um, it could be a foot more, um, than eight feet, but it's roughly eight feet from, from back of sidewalk. Uh, there's examples along San Ramon Way where there's, uh, reduced, I would say, reduced setbacks along either sides, not necessarily in fronts, but certainly along sides. Uh, and so looking at the neighborhood context, we started, well, at least I started looking at it like, maybe the, the 25-foot is still justified, so you're providing, um, the necessary, that necessary rear yard setback, but also being mindful of the front yard, even with the front yard, um, basically holding itself and lending itself into what's now a public right-of-way. No one knows that the, the street, um, is a part of their, basically of their lot, with the exception of, of us and anybody else that may ask that question, right?
Right.
Um, just two more questions, Lucas.
Sure.
One, I noticed, you know, the driveway runs, um, next to the, uh, the neighbor's house, and it looks like there's a six-foot fence proposed between the two properties. Does that run all the way out to the sidewalk, the six-foot fence?
Yeah.
Oh, that's, that's a good question, let me, let me pull up the.
Because of the setback, yeah.
Right, that's a good question.
It only, it only can run as far as the front setback, by code.
Yeah, I was just curious, because it looks like on the plan, they have a six-foot fence proposed.
Yeah, so basically, it, it almost needs to run, or even a little short of the proposed garage face, which is at 24 seven.
Yeah, that's what I was just, yeah, should it be pulled back to the garage face?
I mean, I would be okay giving them the leniency of a couple inches based on the issues or, you know, the non-conformity of the lot. You know, they'd just be a couple inches short of 25 feet, but it would make sense to make it flush with the face of the garage.
And then looking at the, the neighborhood, most of the homes don't have a fence, the ones that do, they're, I think they're three feet. In that, in the front.
Commissioner Trent, you're talking about a front yard fence, so you're talking about the south, the south property line, correct?
Yeah, the south property line, exactly, the, the one that runs, the one that runs, uh, across the neighboring, um, house, 1203.
Um, right, I'm not seeing the, the official location of a, I'm just seeing the existing fence, I'm not seeing where they would locate a new fence.
It's, um.
They talked about it in the.
On the third from the last page.
Landscape plan has it, right.
Yeah, the landscape.
Right, the landscape plan shows a six-foot vinyl fence.
Right.
But it's not clear how far it goes, it appears to be roughly to the front edge of the eaves over the garage.
Okay.
Which is, would be right, yeah.
Um, you're talking about the culinary landscaping plan?
Sorry, third, it's the third page from the end, the landscape plan.
Uh, there it is.
Yeah, it does look like it, it's, you know, close. Yeah, it does look like it, it's, you know, close enough to being flush with the garage.
Yeah.
Bleed it up, I mean.
At, at least the line looks different to me toward the back of the lot than it does toward the front there.
Right, well, the little X's are in, supposed to represent like posts.
Okay.
Can you see the last post? Looks like it goes maybe right beyond the front of the, the face of the garage, but then it stops, so.
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm seeing as well. There, there, we didn't have a condition of approval to clarify that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's smart, yeah.
I mean, does it, does it have to line up with the, the, the front of the structure or the overhang of the? Second story, I think that, that's, I think that dotted line is showing the overhang, is that right?
I think what we have to look at is the twenty-five foot setback from the property line, which.
Okay.
Turns out it's a little bit short of that, it's twenty-four seven from the property line to the face of the garage. So it's a couple inches short of twenty-five, you know, we'd.
Yeah, no, that's a good, that's a good point. Um, you know, one thing that I, I should just mention right now, um, we do have the applicants waiting in queue. Uh, it might be helpful to have them give a, a small presentation or, or be available to answer. Um, any questions up to this point. While I'm answering. Uh, most of them, I, I wonder if they could provide some in- input here as well.
Uh, that's fine with me. I did have a couple of, a couple of questions, uh, on the staff report. If, if we have a moment for it, a table one, it looks to me like the street easement. Counts for setback purposes, but not for, for lot area and coverage purposes, is that right?
Which one are you looking at here?
Uh, table one, it's, uh, page four of nine.
Yes, I see it.
And as far as the front setback, the required setback is twenty feet, so if it's twenty-four seven. Um, then you, I guess that's to the face of the garage. We'd have to say, how far down, how far out do the eaves extend from that?
Eaves wouldn't count, eaves wouldn't count towards that.
The leaves, the leaves are at twenty feet, Steve.
Yeah.
I'm looking at it.
Are at twenty feet?
Yeah, I got.
Yep.
But I thought we, the six, the high fence had to be, it couldn't extend out past the front of the house, am I, the corner?
You're correct, that's correct.
Correct, yeah, that would be the face then, the garage.
So it has to be at twenty-four seven from the property line?
Yeah, so.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, well. Um. Let's, let's make it as conforming as we can, I guess. I don't think that's a big deal to, to, uh, move the end of the fence by a foot since it's not built yet.
And, I apologize, one more quick question, um, can you move the cutouts to the sidewalk? I just again noticed that the, the other property at, um, at twelve oh three, it looks like the driveway entrance is to the, um. Like to the north of the property. I was just wondering if, if that, if this could mirror that or if it has to stay where it is.
You're talking about the driveway.
Entrance.
Entrance?
Yeah.
Could it be relocated or are you talking about, could it be, what's your question?
Yeah, could it be relocated? Just, just curious.
What, where would you put it?
Oh, just to align with the neighboring property at twelve oh three, I mean, not twelve oh three, but twelve oh two.
And then flipping the garage?
Oh, yeah, oh, you align it with this, with the house across the street?
Right.
You'd have to flip the garage.
You'd have to flip.
The other side.
You'd probably have to flip the whole, the whole floor plan.
Not necessarily saying that that, that will do that, I was just wondering if that's something that could be done.
Well, um, could it be done? Yes, because it's a vacant, we're talking about a vacant lot right now.
Got it.
Not in addition or, um, existing conditions. Uh, but the proposal you have before you tonight, and the, the other thing that I should probably preface with is. This is already an existing curb cut, um, they'll be making revisions to that, to that curb cut in compliance with current, um, public works standards. Um.
Okay.
Yeah, if, if, so if we pa- let's pause for a moment if we could, I'd like to bring the applicants in, um.
Okay.
I know, I, it sounds like.
Finish up with questions for the staff, yeah, okay.
There they are.
It's gonna be Laura Marsh, which is the, which is one of the property owners, as well as Wade Ellison, which is the designer.
The design, okay, the architect. Bill Mellett designed.
Wade, can you hear us?
Well, that's landscape, okay.
I can, can you see me?
No.
Oh.
No.
Hello, this is Dave, Marsh and Laura.
Laura, awesome.
Welcome.
Hello, planning commission?
Well, there's Wade.
Hey guys. There we are, wow, okay.
Ah, there, okay.
Hello.
Good evening.
Um, Wade, did you have anything that you wanted to add? I don't know if you guys have been listening in, um, up to this point.
Can answer quite a few questions too. Uh, real quick, uh, Commissioner Trent just had a question regarding flipping the house. If I could just touch on that. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Go ahead.
I mean, we took consideration to the neighboring property to the south and we're about thirty feet away. If we were to flip this, we'd essentially be five feet away from their property line. Um, to me, that just poses. You know, more of a, of an issue than keeping this away from thirty, you know, thirty plus feet. Twenty-six. Um, and change, but I just thought I'd bring that to your attention.
Okay.
Cause this essentially is our twelve-foot setback on the south side and the five on the, on the north.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Um, could we hear from the applicants, please?
Okay, um, well, on the, on the height issue, I also wanted to talk about the style of the home. Um, the twelve, twelve pitch roof.
No, we're seven and twelve.
What are we, seven, twelve, the seven, twelve pitch, he's the contractor, not me. Um, we felt that really, um, brought the style, it's actually a craftsman slash modern farmhouse. Kind of style, and so that type of roof is very common in those styles. There's actually a house on Los Alamos, it's five seventy-four Los Alamos. I don't know if you can see this at all, but that house is, um, indicative of the style that we're talking about. And it also has a very high pitched roof and we weren't able to find out the height of this one, but I'm pretty sure it's over twenty-five. It looks like it is, but anyway, um. And then on the garage issue, we chose to do a side entrance garage. So that we would not be backing out into the street.
Well, plus looks.
Um, plus the aesthetics of not seeing a bunch of garage doors across the front of the property was important to us. And so, there's that, what else?
Well, um, a couple other items.
Oh, the fence.
The fence, um, Lucas asked me to talk to my neighbors, which we did, and, um. It was also, uh, added on to the last, um. Part of the, uh, proposal here, uh, that we wanted, uh, they, they would prefer a wood. Cedar fence and, um, neither one wanted to see a vinyl fence. So I am trying to help my neighbors and give them privacy and also be a good neighbor. So we're doing like a good neighbor fence that would be stained the same color that we had on our chart. I think it's called char wood and, um, and again, that would be only three foot high, twenty-five feet. Back from the face of the, uh, sidewalk there. I have also talked with, uh, Fred Ponce at the inspector, uh, for Public Works. Uh, he told me, um, he would like and prefer to keep the approach exactly where it is. But it does not meet code because it is got too much of a slope at the sidewalk. So we have to make that sidewalk a quarter inch per foot. And we have discussed how to take that care of that and, um, it shouldn't be a problem. And a- as long as we leave the approach and, or change the approach. So it's accessible for handicapped people that go around that cul-de-sac. In my opinion, there may not be ever anybody doing that. But, um, we, we will change that to make Public Works happy. ADA compliant, right. There's also a couple other things that I don't know if ever got, um. Put on our landscape plan, but we do want to have a rainwater collection system. And also a gray water system into the house so we can collect as much water as we can and save on that too. Um, other than that, I can't think of any other questions that you might have.
I'm, I'm curious about the ADA compliance of the curb cut. Are you saying, right, right now, the, the sidewalk is level and then there's a slope to the street? From the street side of the sidewalk, are you going to have to change that so that the slope extends through the sidewalk?
Yes, the sidewalk has to be changed.
Okay.
It's gonna.
Because it, right now, it's too steep, it's more than a quarter inch per foot when we put a level on it. So we have to change the sidewalk to, in front of, by, at the approach.
So the curb cut itself may be okay, but the sidewalk has to change.
Correct.
Okay.
Dave, can you?
I have a question.
Yes, please.
Um, so, I, I didn't quite follow on the fencing, so, so you have worked with the neighbors on. Um. So the, a vinyl fence shows up on the site plan, but you're actually going to do something different and this is, that's a result of working it out with the neighbors?
And I also sent that information to Lucas.
Okay, and that, that's going to be a wood fence and that's, is that going to start at the face of the, um. The front, uh, be, uh, equidistant to the.
It'll be three foot high for twenty-five feet, then it will go up.
From the sidewalk to twenty-five feet from.
Okay.
Back of the sidewalk for twenty-five feet, it's three foot high, then it will gradually go up to six feet high. Between my southerly neighbor and my westerly neighbor. And I talked to both of them, and they would both prefer a wooden fence over a vinyl fence. So I'm trying to help my neighbors out and make everybody happy.
Well, that sounds much more Ojai than a vinyl fence, to be honest.
Yeah, I know, I don't know where that came from, but.
I would also like to note that, um, David's correct, we talked about this before the meeting last week. I added it as a, as a condition of approval to the res, the draft res before the commission for consideration tonight. It is actually the second paragraph to the, the very first, um, condition of approval.
I did see that, I just didn't know what that meant, so.
Yeah. It could read slightly differently, given what we're talking about tonight in terms of the three-foot context versus the six-foot context.
Hmm.
Um, for clarification purposes.
Well, the, yeah, the three foot versus six foot then just meets the code.
Correct.
Right.
Let's switch off your house.
All right, any, any other questions for?
Um, I have a question, um. You know, the, the, the black roof, um. I mean, it just absorbs all the heat from the sun, it doesn't really reflect. And I, have you considered? Um. Doing anything in terms of, uh, the, uh, uh, the cool, the cool roof option? Which either is a lighter color or it's, uh, it shingles that have more reflective surfaces?
Um, I did, uh, submit, I don't have it with me, do you have the code? But, um, it was a solar air, Solaris, it's a special shingle.
Okay.
Made, um. Will reflect the heat, even though it's black, it's still.
Right.
Solaris and I, I, I know it's, uh, made for solar, um. Uh, so it helps us also meet our title twenty-four codes as.
Well, we're also gonna have solar panels, probably.
Oh, I was gonna ask about that too, okay, uh, okay, um.
It's in our, um, material board, yeah.
Or, um, will they be, will the solar panels be installed as a part of the, the project?
What's that?
Will the solar panels be installed as a part of the project?
Uh, I thought it was part of the new codes, but I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. Yeah, with, with new homes.
Then I didn't see them.
I don't think you have a choice. With, yeah, with, with new homes, in order to, um. To satisfy title twenty-four, we, we almost always have to install solar panels.
Okay, all right.
But the, um, the gables on the ADU that's over the garage run north and south. So the solar panels, which I presume are gonna be south facing, are gonna be over the master bedroom. Not over the ADU or the upstairs bedroom that's part of the main residence?
I think we can also put them on the west side, which we have on our current.
Backside of the house, okay.
So west and, um, the south side would be where we will. Which won't be seen from the street either, visible.
Right. Oh, the west of the south side because it's behind the ADU.
Correct.
Right.
And also the west side because it's behind the, the ridge. So you won't see, you won't see the.
Right.
Solar panels, except from the neighbor's yard, I guess, would be the only place you could see it. One, one, one girl can see it.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant from commissioners?
Um, one more question, um, so, so it sounds like you had quite a few that you really did try to communicate with that. The, particularly the neighbor at whatever is.
Twelve oh three.
South, um.
Yes.
So are they, um, with the garage door facing them, did they, are they, are they okay with that? Did they have any?
Uh, she was more concerned of how close we were to her property and I told her that. We're actually over thirty feet away from her house.
Right.
And their garage is actually on the north side too, so they don't even have a view. The house wasn't built for a view, because they put the garage on the north side. And actually the view is on the north side, so, um.
Yeah.
They have.
I, I looked at the view issue and to be honest, uh, because of. How their house is constructed, I, I don't, I think the view issue, which I might otherwise be concerned about. Is probably, uh, would be impacted even with a single-story house.
Y- yeah, and, and the way that their house was actually built, it was looking like it was built. That there would be another house built next to it, so their view is actually the backyard, not the, not towards the north.
But their garage.
Their garage is on the north side. So they don't even have a room unless, and the garage doesn't have a window.
Right, I thought their garage was, uh, uh, I thought their garage was in that part of the house that, that sticks out.
That's the garage.
Yeah, okay, but they have a section, they have a big section of the house that's, that's.
They have one window.
More north of that garage.
One window that I think is maybe.
Base is north?
Yeah, one, one small window that's on the north side, right?
Yeah, okay, I, I just wanted to explore the communications with the neighbor a little bit more, so, so they, uh.
She.
She.
She actually, uh, lives in LA, she hasn't visited, it's a rental. Uh, they haven't, she hasn't seen the property in actually several years, so. Uh, they haven't, she hasn't seen the property in actually several years, so.
But we sent her site plans and elevations uh two weeks ago.
Okay, but she didn't, I guess, uh, you know, you've got the garage door on that side and you've got the AC units on that side, but if she. You didn't hear concerns from the.
Her, her biggest concern was the fence. Both my neighbors, her biggest concern was the fence.
Fence, okay, but she would be okay with the wood fence?
Yes, that is correct.
Yes, ma'am.
I I just wanted to make a comment, first of all, um, you know, due to the fact that you have this. Nonconforming lot with specific conditions. I think architecturally, the design is well done. Uh, the landscape, the preliminary landscape plans look good. And I think you, you know, you've gone out of your way to work with the neighbors and I agree that, you know, having that thirty foot setback with your garage there. Actually was, you know, kind of a smart move and knowing that the curb cut was already there and the city wants you to use the existing. So I just wanted to say, I think you've been, you know, thoughtful in your design, I think. Um, and if I understood you correctly, so the reason for the additional building height was because you wanted to use the. The pitch of the roof that you used to meet the architectural style. Alright, and then, of course, we know there's one other house. But uh, but anyway, I just wanted to thank you, it sounds like you've, you know, you've worked through it and you've asked the right questions and. Uh, indicated that you've worked with your neighbors and the city as well.
Any other commissioners with questions? Jake, you don't have to jump right in, I know this is your first meeting, so. Participate as much as you want. I did have a question, I I guess it's partially for staff. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jake.
The only thing that I noticed on the landscape was the future RV parking spot. It's right next to the neighbor's fence on the south side and I just wanted to make sure that the neighbors were aware that there might be RV parked there on that side of the fence.
I don't see that.
Game plan, Steve, it's not on the main.
On the landscape plan, okay.
Not that I have a concern about it, but it was, it's just something that that.
Yeah, alright.
To answer your question, I have not talked to her about that, we were only talking about a fence.
I mean, based on Dave's uh looking about his description, there's only one window facing north anyway, so I don't think it's. A concern, I just wanted to.
Make sure it was covered. Okay, I did have one other question, and I'm not sure if this is really for staff or if it's for. Commissioner Nolan, who is our resident landscape architect. In the staff report, page seven, the landscaping paragraph. I I am not sure that I understand, I see that the proposed landscaping plan is included. But um, I'm wondering, how does the city calculate landscaping area? Is it all of the lot other than the footprint of the house and the driveway? Um, because this says, uh, the code, as you quoted it here, says, single family residential properties. With landscaping area of greater than twenty five hundred square feet. Be designed consistent with M Welo, uh, which is fine. But I I don't understand if this project falls under that or not. Can can you explain that?
Actually, you know, I had highlighted that in my packet and I'm glad you brought it up. I had a question too regarding this. So I mean, basically, the landscape architect, the designer will calculate the areas and see where they fall. But I I have a question for staff. If you go back into the code, if, and you referenced B two, which says. Requires that single family residential projects with landscaping areas of greater than twenty five hundred square feet. But isn't this new, a new project, which would mean five hundred square feet? It it doesn't really affect the applicant because either way they're gonna have to do it, but I think it's more a technicality. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, or maybe the question is, how did you determine that this isn't a new project and it's um? If you go into the code, let me see if I have it open.
Yeah, I'm pulling it up here right now.
I might have closed it, um. Maybe I did.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, here we go, yeah, so if you look at one, it's for new construction, two is for rehabilitated landscaping projects. I guess maybe a rehabilitated is one that's already there.
So the the correction. There is, it's new construction, so it's. The uh, it would be B one and not B two.
Yeah, and either way, it doesn't really affect the applicant, because if you look at the um, I don't know that they actually gave the square footage. But I guess just eyeballing it, it's, you know, it looks like it's well over five hundred or even twenty five hundred square feet. But Steve, when you have to turn in the final landscape plans, you have to actually calculate the areas. It's a state requirement and that would reflect the numbers.
Add a math, gotta do some math.
A question on fire sprinklers, I don't recall seeing it in the packet. Uh, but my understanding is that that casitas. Will not s- certify sufficient fire flow and duration. To allow you to do without sprinklers, or is it in the code now that everything new has to have sprinklers? In a residential project?
So uh Chair Quillis, I can, I can jump in here, so um, the, it is now in the code, California residential code. Uh, three, one, three point two now requires residential fire sprinkler systems in all one. And two family dwellings, so all single family homes and duplexes are required to have automatic sprink- uh sprinkler systems. By state law, it's in the California Fire and Residential Code.
Okay, so that supersedes the Ventura County.
Yes, at our local as well.
And all of Ojai is high fire zone, correct?
It's a, large parts of it are in the very high fire hazard severity zone.
Okay, any other questions uh by commissioners for staff or the applicant?
Um, I just have a question of staff, just to make sure here, so the. You, the RV parking would be legal in the side setback like that, is that, that's allowed? As long as it's out of the front yard.
It's out of the front yard and um behind a nontransparent fence essentially. Some sort of a nontransparent component, so it can't just. Sit in the front yard per per code, it's gotta be kind of out of sight, out of mind to a certain degree.
That be accomplished here?
A gate which is not shown in fencing.
Yeah, I think in the landscaping plan, isn't there a gate or something?
There isn't. So basically, the six foot fence that we've been talking about that meets the three foot fence at that intersection. Is where a fence and a gate would have to be installed and tied into. The south corner of the garage to provide that screening.
Think it's actually a little farther back than it's.
Keynote twelve, right, on the landscape plan?
Note twelve shows a gate.
Oh, I see what you're talking about, okay.
Yeah, there is a gate there.
Oh, you're right, you're right. I was thinking they were gonna park in that courtyard area.
I'm not, I I got lost here, which shows, oh, I.
Item twelve, okay.
Yep, that would now be a a a wood gate, not a vinyl gate.
Okay, that was a goof, oh, I guess I thought the RV would be parking in the um. Be in front of that, so you're, the RV would be parking. Behind it, oh, okay.
That's additional screening then, yeah.
We're good, yeah.
That's better, yeah.
Alright, any more questions for the owner or the applicant, the designer or for staff? Alright, I'm going to close the public hearing then and um. Mr. Mrs. Misch and Mr. Mallett, is it? No, that was the name on the landscaping plan, I apologize. Uh, you're all welcome to stay and listen to the rest of of our deliberations, uh, we welcome anyone who wants to to listen in. But I would like now to move to the uh resolution. Uh, the, yeah, the resolution itself, if we could, is that okay with the rest of the commission? This is, it's it's when we get into these legal documents that I tend to get kind of picky. And I apologize in advance for that. Does anyone else, so first of all, does anyone else have any, any questions about any part of the resolution itself? I have a few.
Steve, can I just?
Please go ahead.
Like to state um my few, my uh, my thoughts about this project. Um, it doesn't mean that I will vote one way or the other, but um. I just have to say that um. It seems like it's a very large house and um a very tall house and uh. So and I, you know. I I just would like, I think that um. As a policy issue, we may need to talk about sort of the mansionization trend, I thought we were going away from the mansionization trend, but. I I just, you know, I just have concerns about the whole overall size, it's big, it's big on the size of the property. Um, and and I also wish, I mean, I appreciate the going with the Solaris roof. That hope presumably is a cool roof. Um, I would like to see people, more people talking about electrification with a heat pump. And uh probably electric induction range and uh. Yeah, and of course you're doing the solar panels, so that's good as well, anyway, I just, I just um. I just have some concerns about the overall size of the house and then going really high, going higher than the standard. And, you know, I just, I just, I'm still not convinced that that's really necessary. But um, but I'm I'm happy to proceed ahead and talk, talk about the resolution.
Any other overall thoughts before we get into the resolution itself? Hearing none, I'll, I'll start if no one else has any questions, uh, and I sent some of this material to Lucas the other day. Just to make sure that we have all of our Ts crossed and Is dotted. I think uh, and we're talking about attachment A now, I think the. Next to the last whereas, based upon the foregoing facts and findings. I think that should follow the whereas it's right behind it. Which puts it's right before the wording on page two, now therefore. I think you can just pick up that, pick up that paragraph, two lines and move it to the next page. Okay, um, on page two of attachment A, the uh, where did we go here? Condition one, solar study plans should read solar access shadow plans, I believe. That's the title I saw on the last page of the drawing packet. That we were given, and by the way, that's something. I hadn't seen on other cases that we had had before the planning commission. I was a little surprised to see all of that. I guess it's required, but it hasn't been presented in the past, to my recollection in in four years. I appreciate the the applicant um. Working with the neighbors to change the fence, I did not see. Uh, I thought the west side of the property was already fenced, is that being removed?
I think the plan says um.
I saw along the south side, it said a four foot iron fence and a four foot wire fence were being removed. I didn't, didn't notice along the back.
On this, on the west side, it says six foot chain link fence to be removed.
Okay, okay. I I remain concerned about conditions seven and eight. Uh, that say all conditions of the building department and all conditions of the public works department shall be met. Uh, those phrases are are sufficiently vague to me. Um, like Commissioner Lottis was was talking about lot lines where feasible at our last meeting. It's, it's a little vague, if there are articles that can be cited in the code. I'd really prefer to see them in there.
You're talking about condition number seven, which says prior to commencing construction.
Yes, second, second sentence there, and I guess condition eight is all one sentence. But again, it just says all conditions of the building department, all conditions of the public works department shall be met. Uh, but there's no obvious way of knowing what those are. Until you walk up and talk to somebody in city staff. If there's a way that some portion of the code could be cited, I'd feel much more comfortable about it.
I wonder if we got rid of the last sentence, it says all conditions of the building department shall be met. That feels a little bit, well, it feels very vague, right?
I would be good with.
If you have to get a building permit, that covers. I mean, they have to do whatever is required by the building um. Building code and building department regulations, so.
I guess so, and if the applicant is is concerned about what that means, you can always say at the, at the counter. Where is it in the code? Or where is it written down that I have to do that or I must not do that? Good advice for all applicants, I think.
You can also reference by title, um, title seven covering all public works and then title. Nine covering all building regulations to narrow it down.
Alright, um. In uh, condition seventeen, I think, uh, if where it refers to uh. Short term rentals, again, a period of less than thirty days, I think the city council has now changed that wording. To less than one calendar month, is that correct?
Oh, you're right, Steve, I think you are.
I had, I had pointed it out some time ago that that would make it illegal to rent anything for the month of February.
Commissioner, uh, uh, so to the chair, um, the code online still reflects. Uh, less than thirty days.
Ah, okay. I I thought they actually had changed that.
No, it may be that there's a delay in the um. In the, in the, in the, in the code. What is publicly available still shows less than thirty days.
That is all the questions I have. Are there any other questions or deliberations by other council or commissioners? Uh, to. Bring us to a point of deciding on this case.
Um, so so I'm still, is, what about um? The number one condition and with the cha- the word change, how, how did we decide to change that wording? It's gonna be new, three foot to six foot cedar fencing, is that how we're doing it?
It's a number, yeah, number two.
Is that gonna be under number one, number one? But you, you're adding a three foot two, like a three, a new three foot two. Six foot high fence, cedar fencing.
That's correct.
We could, we could modify that. Second sentence of the second paragraph of condition one. To say new six foot cedar fencing, so on, so on. Except a three foot fence within the front setback. Would that work for you?
It would. That's fine. What about, I mean, do we need to, do we need to do anything about incorporating the rainwater collection system or the gray water system? Or we don't, we don't really, currently, we don't have regulations requiring that. Is that, is that correct? Or is there anything?
I believe that's the case, and gray water and, and water collection are really building standards, which is the BABS thing to do. But I don't think there's a hard requirement for either one. It sounds to me like it's something that's being volunteered here.
Yeah, it's recommended even if you go into the landscape standards, you know, you want to keep your storm water on site. There's this, talks about gray water.
Okay, so there are-
It's more recommended at this point, and I hope down the road we change that, but for now, it's, I applaud anyone who steps forward and does it without a-
I do too, I do too. We, do we have any concerns about what that might end up looking like or where it's located, or is that the staff review that?
I think we'd have to open up the public hearing again and ask the applicant what, I mean, that, it could be an aesthetic thing where, where if you're collecting rainwater or gray water, you can, there's three gray water options. There's laundry to landscape, there's the simple one where you take all your sink water excluding the kitchen sink and laundry. But it just goes through a system directly to the landscape and you're not holding it. And then the, the standard one is where you're actually holding it, you're filtering it and you're pumping it most likely back out through your irrigation system. So, of course, that's the more-
I guess I should have asked him at the time, but-
Yeah, we didn't ask, but.
Just to, just to clarify here, our, our code specifically does reference gray water systems in section, section ten, ten dash two point one two two oh, and the, the, the code says that gray water systems promote the efficient use of water and are encouraged, but what the requirement is that they should conform to the California Plumbing Code.
And that's what I just referenced, those three different options are in the California Plumbing Code.
We have no other requirement other than, yeah.
Yeah, encouraged.
Yeah.
But, yeah, thank you for a consideration for, yeah. And the same with the storm water capture. I mean, you know, you can collect all your rainwater, direct it right into the landscape or and or you could hold it.
It's better for the landscape anyway if you keep all the water on site.
Yeah, and that actually is, technically, you are supposed to keep all your water on site and not let it run off to the street and or into your neighbors. And why, why would you want to let it go if you can keep it?
I guess, yeah, I guess for the future, I would really like to have this kind of addition, whatever you want to call it, feature, project feature, explored a little bit more and, and so that we could actually include, include more specifics in our, in our resolution on this kind of, on that kind of thing.
So Kathy, just to-
Or is it premature to do that?
Well, for quite a few years, I have encouraged and worked with, I mean, some of our past planners and city attorney, et cetera, trying to get the, the gray water into the code and make it required. Not that you had, you, you could plum for it, because that's not, there's not a lot of money to do that, but, you know, it was your option to hook it up into the landscape. But we never got much traction on it. And then the state has come down about the part about keeping storm water on site, so I, I think it's something to, for us to pursue, especially with our general plan update coming up and
Okay.
Yeah, there's so many positive reasons to do it.
Something we can talk about as, as we take a deeper dive into specific sections of Title X.
Okay. I just hope they-
Picking, we're kind of picking the easy stuff right now, try to get as much of that out of the way as we can and in front of city council.
Well, I just, I hope, they said they were going to do it. My hope is that they actually will do it. And one other thing, so do we specify the, anywhere on the plans, what the roof tiles are, the roof shingles?
It's on the material board sheet that they have in the, in our packet. Those are the Solaris ones that-
I, somehow I didn't, I didn't see.
It's Attachment B one of one, where they have, they show the rock and the siding.
Oh, I see.
There it is, the roofing is there.
Somehow I just, I guess I skipped the page. Okay, Solaris, shadow gray, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, specified, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Trent, Commissioner Swift? Okay.
No, no questions, thank you.
Uh, we, we have, we have a few small additions or changes to the resolution itself. If there is a motion to approve-
Oh, you're muted. I can't hear.
Yeah, neither, Steve, you're, yeah.
Maybe your volume went down. It doesn't say mute or it doesn't show the mute symbol. We couldn't hear you very well. Technical difficulties.
Our leader.
Our leader has left.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
I was thinking you need an emergency backup plan where you always have a big felt pen and a, you know, some cardboard where you can write down what you want to say. You know, something so basic.
Yeah.
Backup plan. The best thing, the thing I like the most about this is the mute feature. This is the time of day when everybody walks by with their dog. And the first time I was ever on Zoom, the first few times, I didn't know about the mute feature, and I took my dogs to a friend's house. But anyway, I'll mute now.
You know, if Steve is stuck, he could just call in and we could hear him.
Let me give him a, a ring.
Yeah. I know, I had to do that one night, my, my computer froze, and luckily I had my other computer that didn't have the microphone or the speaker, but I called in and I could see everything, but.
I remember that.
And technical difficulties.
Never know.
Yeah, it's like, once again, backup plan.
All right, he's going to try to call in.
Oh, good, yeah.
Okay, the machine tells me you can hear me speak now.
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, all right. I don't know what's going on with the video. But I won't worry about that. Are you all seeing a partly black, partly white picture?
All black.
That's what I see. All black.
We can see each other, but we can't see you.
Yeah, okay, all right. Well, have, have we sufficiently discussed the resolution itself? Anyone with more, with more comments or questions? All right, then I would entertain a motion to approve as amended. Anyone?
I'm, is it, Steve, are you okay if we bring up a motion before a motion is made?
Bring up other comments before the motion? Certainly, go ahead.
Okay. So the, and maybe this is more of a discussion, a little more discussion. I think the only area that I, you know, have a bit of a question is the roof height. And I don't, I don't know if we should open up the public hearing. I guess the question is, was it explored? It, it sounded like you may have answered this. I hope I'm not repeating something or going over something that was already addressed. Maybe I didn't understand it. If it could be lowered, is it, is it a major issue in the whole design of the entire structure? I think that was my only concern, and I don't know if anybody else has a question about that.
Well, uh, yeah, I mean, yeah, I, I don't feel that real strong justification is there. I mean, when I first looked at, I will say, when I first looked at this proposal, I, I thought it was very, everything was very large. But I, but in the discussion tonight, I, I have come to realize that the, for example, coming having the house sited close to the street rather than pushing it to the backyard, it's actually mirroring the house across the street, which coincidentally has has the higher roof height. And, you know, I'm just not thrilled with the size, but those houses in the neighborhood are all generally pretty large. And so, yeah, I, I guess I'm coming back to the, I, I'm making a full circle here. Yeah, so the roof height, it's not a variance, so we don't need, you know, really hard hardship or really, you know, very specific findings to make. It's a judgment call, I guess.
Yeah, the, the, the general, what is it called? The substantial compliance with the drawings, I think, covers that extra one foot of height.
I, I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not thrilled with going above the twenty-five foot height. I'm not thrilled with, I, I, you know, I, I hope we're not trending toward mansionization kind of things in Ojai, because I don't think it fits. But, you know, I guess because of the neighborhood, I, I guess I have, I don't know, I, I'm, I'm, I'm a little conflicted, but I, and I, I am concerned about it, but I guess I don't have good reasons one way or the other to deny or, or really, you know, be wildly supportive.
Right. So you know, the, as far as the house size, they, you know, they haven't exceeded the, their, you know, the square footage of the lot, what do I want to say, the site coverage, you know, they're still under. So, I mean, they're, they're, everything else is compliant. I, and the only reason I'm, I guess, again, if there wasn't, if they just, if the, if there wasn't any issue with the, the height, I would just go, I'm, I'm actually fine with it. My biggest concern is that, is like, when we start, because it's not in the code and we start saying, well, I guess that one's okay, then that one's okay, and then all of a sudden,
Yeah.
are we starting this new trend? Not that it's bad, but maybe the code needs to get changed. You know, I'm not saying for sure that it does, but maybe that's what needs to happen. I guess that's my only drawback. Otherwise, I don't have a problem with it. So I just wanted to share that with my fellow commissioners, because I, I'm not sure where everybody's coming from. And if, if that's an issue and-
Yeah, I, I definitely agree with that one, Kathy. So, so how, how high is the attic, actually? So they've got nine-foot ceilings on each level.
I think just on the first level.
Yeah, eight on the second, nine on the first.
Second, okay.
Yeah, which isn't unreasonable, I mean-
That's fine, yeah.
I don't have a problem with that. Yeah, it's, I think it's really more this thing about, you know, if you don't follow the code, then all of a sudden, you know, is there an issue down the road with other properties, you know, other applicants coming in and?
So if they, if they reduce the,
They're just barely over.
Roof to twenty-five, does that only mean that there would be a slightly different slope to the roof? And, and that the attic would be a little short, shorter in terms of, maybe you couldn't stand up full height or something? I'm not sure.
I'm not sure. There's a lot of attic there.
Maybe the-
Because you've got second floor rooms.
Open the public hearing up and ask.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Is that appropriate, Steve?
Um, I guess we could do that. I'll reopen the public hearing temporarily and hear from the applicants. Is there a lot of attic space there? Or, or do you have, you know, is it eight feet? And then a very short attic that you may or may not be able to get into from the ADU or the upstairs bedroom?
No, it's not a very tall attic. You wouldn't be able to stand up in it.
And with the, the height that you're proposing, you can stand up? Is that the difference?
No, no.
But either way, you can't, okay. Yeah, that would make sense.
Unless you were very-
It's more, it's more the, more the slope of the roof, I think, that dictated the height.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's just the, the modern farmhouse style that we've been looking at and all the pitchers have about a seven and twelve pitch, so that's what we started with. And that's small portion that's, it's only a foot higher, so what it ended up with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that, that is in the code. If, if they proposed more than thirty feet, I think we'd have a big problem here, but
Oh, it's so dark.
Between twenty-five and thirty is sort of at the commission's discretion.
The house across the street, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
And several other homes.
Okay, any other questions for the applicants or the designer?
Oh, I was gonna-
All right, then we'll re, sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, about the rainwater collection system. And there would be no tanks that would be visible. I'm planning on putting everything underground. And then, and then gray water is actually, seeps into the ground, is the way we've done them in the past.
Right.
And that helps water your plants too, and you can't have those tied into the sewer or your landscape, so. It would be done all per code, but the rainwater collection would go into an underground tank, so it'd never be visible.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Nolan, does that sound good to you?
Yeah. Well, I'm wondering if anybody else has a comment.
So, wait, you're doing a seven to one, is that right?
Seven to twelve. Seven to 12.
Seven to 12, sorry. Um, what would it change to with a foot less? I, I have no idea.
Sounds like six to 12. Is that right?
I, I would have to do the math, but, um, maybe six and a half. I, I would have to check my spans and all that, but.
Oh, yeah, check the spans, of course, okay.
I don't know the answer to that question without, um, sitting down and figuring it out.
Okay.
Well, if there aren't any more, isn't any more discussion, I'm willing to make a, a motion.
I just have one last.
Oh, yeah, Jake does.
Oh.
Yeah, I just-
Go ahead, Jake.
My first one, I've been listening, but I, I do believe that the applicants did a really good job at doing their homework, talking to the neighbors. Building a home that blends into that cul-de-sac area of other homes that are larger, are taller. And coming from an electrical background with solar is a greater pitch, you're gonna get greater output of your solar. And I think if that's the plan of them doing that, I, I think, you know, adding a foot to go higher with the house across the street is only gonna benefit the applicant's solar production because of that, that, because of that pitch increase, so I don't have any problems with the design.
Okay. Uh, John, any other comments?
Um, I actually agree with Jake. I think the, I think the applicant did a great job, um, trying to stay within the conformity of the code. Um, also align their property with the other, um, residents in the area. I think the whole neighborhood in general has large homes. Um, the lots are not necessarily that big, but the homes are, are pretty big. Um, so I don't think it is out of line with the rest of the neighborhood. Um, and, you know, you look to the properties across the street, and with the property down the street, and they're all, they're all fairly tall. I would argue they're probably taller than the 25 feet, so that makes, you know, that makes sense to have 26 feet. I don't think that's, yeah, be out of the, um, ordinary in that neighborhood. Um, and as far as the view goes, I think, I think, uh, the initial thoughts that even if a one-story home was built, it would block the views of that, that other neighbor, um, so.
Which, there isn't much of a view already from the other neighbor, it sounds like.
Yeah, it looks like the home wasn't necessarily built for that view. It looks like that was built for that portion of the property to be facing a house. Um, that's why the windows are small, and there's a sliding door that opens out to the side, and yeah, it doesn't look like it was necessarily made for a view, so, um,
Yeah.
I think, considering all of that, I think the, I think that's a beautiful design. Um, you know, I like the, uh, the idea of the rainwater collection. I think that's something that, you know, hopefully we can explore further, um, and make that some sort of requirement with the building, because, um, obviously we need to save as much water as we can. So I really like that idea. Um, and, uh, yeah, that's my, that's my opinion.
Okay, I think we're, we're kind of sliding into deliberations here. Are there any other questions for the applicants?
Sorry.
Okay, then I'm gonna close the public hearing again. And Commissioner Nolan, you wanted to make a motion?
Yes.
Can I, oh, oh, go ahead, Kathy. One, one, sorry, before, okay, I would like to have, um, I would suggest having, adding another whereas, because I would like specifics about why this is being, why would, why this might be approved, which would include, um, reference to the, the, um, this specific neighborhood with large houses and, and, uh, houses that do exceed currently, currently exceed the 25 feet, and I would try to get some other, um,
Language?
And lang, addresses in there, but specifically add the, the house across the street. And, um, so, so that, so that in the future, if somebody goes, well, they approved that house over there to exceed the height. I want to have the reasons why, um, this was done in the resolution, so it's very clear.
So would you like a whereas that says something like, whereas the proposed height of this project is consistent with other homes in the neighborhood?
Yes, and, and including, um, reference to the 12, whatever that other-
1202.
Yes.
You might just say height and scale in a way that kind of
Yes.
go together. I mean, they, they meet their, um, lot requirement, but the height has to do with the scale, so
Yes.
it might be good to include that.
Building mass and scale
Yeah.
is compatible with the neighborhood.
Yeah.
The additional height, um, is consistent with other, um, existing homes, including the one right across the street.
Including 1202, yeah, okay.
Or, and the siding of the house mirrors the house siding on the other side of this, uh, again.
So it's referenced.
Yeah. Oh, that's referenced?
Well, no, but what you're saying is so that we have a reference as to why the whereas.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay, we could talk about the mass, scale, height, and siding of the project are consistent with the neighborhood.
Right.
Lucas, can you add another whereas in there somewhere?
He's on mute.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
I've been listening and writing.
Alright.
Should I go for it?
Um, I've-
Yes, please.
Oh, wait, John's got a question too.
Oh, John?
I'm so sorry, I was just thinking,
Yeah.
Um, and I, I hope that, um, you know, this is somewhere in the plans, but is there any, are the eaves covered by chance, or are they open eaves? The only reason I ask is for fire protection. Obviously, open eaves is a higher, higher fire risk.
You have to meet that, don't you, now, with the code?
For the, um, speaker.
Yeah, I think that's maybe required, I'm not-
I think you have to meet all the fire-
Yes.
I think that's a condition.
You have to be compliant to even get your building, I think you've got to reflect-
Right.
So, that's-
Right, I think that's right.
Now, all the things we ask for are givens.
Yeah.
Double checking, thank you.
No, but that's good, yeah.
Well, who's double checking? Lucas?
Yeah, I'll, I'm not saying it in here specifically, um, but I believe it's a, it's a requirement. We could add that as a condition.
I, I think it probably falls within all requirements of the building department, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's fire department standard conditions in here too, so.
Right.
Yeah, right, okay. Well, Commissioner Nolan?
Okay, I'm ready. Alright, I, um, making a motion that the planning commission approved design review permit DRP 20-002 for the construction of a 2,629-square-foot two-story single-family home with an attached 590-square-foot two-car garage and an attached 703-square-foot accessory dwelling unit um, in the residential zone and located at 1201 San Ramon Way. Accessory's parcel number 028-0-18-135. With the addition in the account, conditions of approval that we add the clause, um, which staff will craft, um, including the scale, building mass and height um, in relationship to being consistent and compatible with the neighborhood. And, um, and then on the project-specific conditions, we, um, on number one, I believe we, and I just wanna make sure we did this on the solar study plans. I believe Steve Colsey used had said the name should be Solar Access.
Shadow Plans.
Shadow Plans, okay, just to be, or, or I guess what we should say is whatever the city typically calls that.
Well, that was, that's the title on that, on that page of the packet.
Okay, and then, um, in addition on that number one item, and this is in regards to the fence height, that at the end of the clause there, we, um, put accept three-foot fence in the front setback.
Yep.
And you can word that a little bit better if needed. And I believe, I don't know if we want, oh, yeah, on, um, community development, public works standard conditions, number seven, we said that we were gonna delete the last sentence, "All conditions of the building department shall be met." And I don't know if we want to reference Title IX as our city attorney had mentioned. I think that's probably appropriate, just for reference. And then on number eight, um, I wasn't sure if we actually did a strike-through on "shall be met", but I know there was that question about that being similar to number seven, and that we would reference Title VII.
Yeah, if we take out "shall be met," then we need a verb somewhere in there.
Yes, we do, I agree. I don't know if maybe it works on number eight, can we leave it? Do we have a recommendation?
Yeah, I think so.
Just on the wording? Or should we leave it to staff and just let them word it correct? Assuming we don't want the looseness of "shall be met."
Yeah. If, if staff could add a specific title or chapter or article citations in seven and eight,
Yeah.
uh, whatever they are, I think that would suffice.
Yep.
So I'm adding that to my motion.
For eight, it would be at the beginning.
Okay.
That condition, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
The first, the, the first one about the mass, scale, and height, I think, belongs in the wherazes then? Rather than in one of the conditions?
Yes, it should be a whereas.
Whereas, exactly.
Okay.
I would put it, uh, just, uh, just before the last whereas, which got, which is getting-
Okay. It's getting moved already, right.
Yeah.
Or, or wherever staff thinks is.
Yeah, appropriate. Okay, so that's my motion. Including
Okay.
the, the minor discussion we just had on those specific items to get the language and the intent correct, and where we gave staff the authority to craft the language.
Right, okay. Uh, is there a second to the motion?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Alright, Sheri, would you take role, please?
Chair Colsey?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nolan?
Yes.
Commissioners Lottis?
Yes.
Commissioner Trent?
Yes.
Comis, Commissioner Swift? Motion passes.
Terrific, five to zero, the motion passes. Uh, thank you very much for, uh, sitting in with us today, Mr. and Mrs. Misch, and, and your designer. And, um, you have the planning commission's approval as, as amended as you heard. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Steve.
Alright, let's move on to item three then. And that is, um, review and discuss four sections of the Ojai municipal code and provide feedback to staff. These are the four sections that we talked about initially at the last meeting. Uh, Lucas, could you take us through that, please?
Yeah, and just to, just to, um, refresh everyone's memory, when we, when we met on this one two weeks ago, it was actually three sections that we were looking at, and about halfway through our conversation, um, I had the realization that there is another section that was, that was probably worthy of, of including, which was Section 10-2.1105, which addresses the hillside project development standards as well. And why not, if we're talking about hillside development standards, why not, why not, or the design criteria, why not talk about those development standards as well? And look at what, what language and revisions are potentially necessary. Um, so it, it, it kind of grew from a discussion of three sections into, into a discussion of four sections. So that's what we have, um, for discussion tonight. Not necessarily looking for action, um, an actionable item, but I am looking for us to do potentially a deeper dive into, into some of this. Um, earlier today, I sent the commission over some information, um, kind of directed towards our discussion from two weeks ago. And it was, it was highlighting the, the creek, kind of that creek, Blue Line Creek, um, component, as well as, uh, when utilities cross, um, these, these, um, these creek areas as well. So I sent information over, and I realized that it's, it's meant to be a discussion piece. If there is additional information or clarification that's necessary, um, then absolutely, let's have that discussion, and let's look at those other pieces. Uh, this isn't necessarily definitive by any stretch of the imagination. Um, as one note, I know that I was, I was, uh, communicating with Commissioner, um, Lottis earlier today. And, um, she had noted that there was actually, um, even more information that, that helps to clarify some of the, um, Blue Line stream discussion that we were having, uh, two weeks ago. And the Blue Line stream discussion is kind of an interesting one, because, uh, by definition, we have a, we have a definition for, of a creek. And within that definition for a creek, it actually identifies the USGS as a specific, um, reference point to identify those Blue Line creeks. And it, it goes to the point of what Commissioner Lottis, um, had brought to the, to the table previously, which was, are there specific creeks or Blue Line streams that exist named? Um, and what are those ones that are identified through USGS? So, I was getting some conflicting information in terms of the research that I was doing. Using the definition, it seems fairly limited in terms of the, the creeks that are out there currently, um, that are, that are identified through USGS. Um, and if I could, I, I'd almost like to share a screen as a, as a discussion piece to start, and then maybe dive into some of these, some of these sections, um, and questions.
Um, Lucas, where is the definit, so there is a definition of Blue Line Creek in our code?
Yeah, there's a definition for creek that I had discovered earlier today.
It's in 10-23602.
Yeah, 3602.
Oh, okay.
Which helped provide some framing here, because I was, a, a little, a little bit of a loss in terms of trying to figure out where, where we kind of navigate, so.
Oh, so it's a Blue Line stream. I mean, when it says it's shown as a blue line on the USGS, that's a Blue Line stream.
Right, so the definition of creek is a natural channel that conveys water to a river and, to a river, and for the purposes of these zoning regulations, is shown as a blue line on the latest seven-and-one-half-minute topographic quadrangle map published by the United States Geographical Survey, or the USGS. So that helps us to begin to frame our, our conversation for today. Um, Commissioner Lottis, I know you had sent me something earlier today, uh, as, as it relates to USGS. We just gotta make sure that we're, we're all on the same page. Oh. Chair Colsey, you're back on with us here.
Um, is my audio back on?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, I can see you.
Well, I've, I've still got my phone on, too.
You've got an echo.
Oh, maybe that's why. He's actually, he was showing up three times on my screen. The triple Steve.
Okay, I can hear you just fine.
You've got kind of an echo spell. Is your phone on?
Nope, phone's off.
Well, now we can hear you.
Good.
Great.
Yeah.
Did the Mark I reset, turn it off, turn it back on again.
When in doubt, reboot.
Super.
Yeah, so, uh, getting back to kind of the, and to the discussion, um, that, that map, that that USGS map that we were just referencing, um, I'd like to pull it up and just talk it through, because it's kind of an interesting map. It doesn't necessarily show the entire city, which is odd to me that it would, that we would have such a, a specific reference, but not show the entire city, but when you, and, well, let's just look at the map here real quick, and we pull it up here.
Now, that was the last page of that project report, right?
Yeah, but, uh, yeah, yeah, but you're, okay, so.
Yeah, I better correct that.
That was not actually, while that was something that I sent to the full commission earlier today, um, that is not necessarily what is, that's not in the definition of creek for what I was looking at today, so I'd sent that-
This thing, right?
Hold on.
Yes.
Right.
Right, these are not Blue Line streams. I don't, this is just uh, this is like multiple drainages in the city.
This is Ojai watershed tributaries and streams. So it's like everything.
Yeah.
Yeah, not necessarily Blue Line.
I mean, maybe we want to reference this instead of the Blue Line streams, I'm not sure, but.
No, you might have a point there.
Um, so anyway, let me uh, share my screen here. There we go. Can everybody see that?
No. Oh, yeah, now we do.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Oh, wow.
Topographical.
And that, just, uh, the code says the most recent USGS seven and a half minute uh, uh, map, which is, this is the most recent one, done in twenty eighteen.
Okay, yeah.
Where the heck is the? Oh, here we go, up here.
North, maybe?
There you go. Now you're getting back into the city, yeah.
So you can see, if you look at the far left-hand side, it cuts the city off in about, it's about half of the city. Um.
Well, there must be another sheet.
Yeah.
These ones in sheets.
Yeah.
The sheet next to it is lay, should be lay, the name of it is uh, Matilaha, I think. Where in this sheet is labeled, has got the name of Ojai. At least that's where I found this in the beginning, but.
Yeah.
Yep, so Commissioner Lottis, we're on the same page. I have Matilaha up as well, but I don't want to switch back and forth because I think it'll um, the shared screen might actually be something funky. So let's let's focus on this one first and then we'll go to the other one. Um, so if you look, can you? Can you see my cursor?
Yes, San Antonio Creek.
Yep, you've got San Antonio Creek, which is interesting because it splits off um, up to Sulphur Spring, it looks like. And then it it calls for Thatcher over here.
Thatcher Creek, yes.
Which then runs along.
Yep, that's right.
Through.
Right.
Little park, yeah.
Yeah. And then you've got Stewart Creek over on the very left-hand edge of this map.
Is that this here?
No, it's uh, it runs along Kenyatta.
It's not on this, well, here's Kenyatta, it's probably not showing it. It might just be showing it up at the top a little bit.
Yeah, up there, but right there, right there. That's the uh, Catch Basin.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, this is that Catch Basin, right?
Yep, and then it goes underground until it's down south of Ojai Avenue.
This is Fox is the other one, I think.
What's the name of the stream that runs uh, kind of along Drown and then then crosses Ojai Avenue and then eventually connects up with the, the one you were showing, that one, yeah.
This one here?
Great.
Is it, don't they call it Fox?
Yeah, it's not labeled, which is interesting to me. I was I was hoping it would be labeled here, like the San Antonio and the Thatcher.
Yeah.
Oh, and Reeves Reeves Creek also, yeah.
Yeah, maybe it depends on the volume or, you know, the size of the creek.
Um, but San Antonio, is there any part of that in the city limits, though?
I don't think any of it.
I think it runs right along the south edge of the city limits.
Yeah, down where um, like, say, the Ojai Valley Inn is, that that's San Antonio Creek on the
It is.
Kind of the east side. Um.
On the next map.
Yeah, on the next map, yeah. And it's hard to say if that area right behind um, Pociman Hill is, well, I know Pociman Hill's in the city limits, but I'm not sure it's off with the county right in there, because it doesn't show the city limit line.
Oh, that's kind of going through um.
Pociman Hill is definitely in the city limit.
Yeah, but I think, yeah, I think this is running through, what's that uh, what's that ranch that has the oil? Oil wells in it?
Oh.
Well, that's farther down Creek Road somewhere.
Yeah.
So you don't think this creek is running through some of that, is like on the is it approaches Saddle Lane? Some of that might be some of that ranch. Whatever it's called.
Because it's up behind Pociman Hill, which is.
Behind Pociman Hill, yeah.
Oh, that's a skunk skunk ranch?
No, what's that, what am I? Oh, it doesn't matter, but that's not, I know that, I know that ranch is not in the city limits because um, the county had.
County, yeah.
Right.
Wells there, not the city.
Yeah, so the, kind of what I wanted to do here tonight is to provide some context. I know um, in in some cases, it helps to have a little bit of a visual as we dive into some of the wording, the language of the code. Uh, I don't know, I felt like that was missing um, in our discussion two weeks ago.
Mm-hmm.
Try to put some some paint onto the canvas here as we, as the canvas of the municipal code, if you will, uh, in terms of understanding where those lines are drawn at, I suppose. Uh, let me stop sharing this screen and pull up the, pull up the other um, the other piece as well, which I think is the Matilaha that Commissioner Lottis had just mentioned. All right, can everybody see it?
Yep.
Yes.
Hmm.
So the odd thing about this one is it covers the western, or the western half, maybe? Um.
Never at Miners Oaks. That's, it's almost like we're missing um, a portion of town.
Right? That's what I kind of thought, too, when I was looking at this.
Like, when in between this one and the first.
Oh, good, uh, go south a little bit more.
If you can. No. Because that's Miners Oaks in.
Yeah, you've got Miners Oaks here.
There's Terramina and it's kind of like, I'm.
Oh, I see Ojai. Oh, I, the picture, our our photographs are covering up part of the map. How do I make those go away? Oh, there we go. Okay, I can see the Arbolata now.
But I don't think we have this section from Kenyatta to like, say, approximately Ojai Avenue.
Weird.
I'm listening some here.
No, we do. We're missing that section.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's on purpose or what the story is there, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, it did, it did feel like there was some information that was missing here when I was comparing.
Yep.
Um, the only blue line that I'm really seeing here, aside from the one that you're seeing on the south.
Creek Road.
Right. Is this blue line here, but comparing our
Of the city.
Our boundaries, this appears to be outside of the city.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, so aside from that, we're really, I wasn't really seeing anything on the western half.
Yeah, so we've got Fox Creek and Stewart Creek and maybe Thatcher Creek.
Or San Antonio.
Whatever San Antonio Creek is inside the city limits, yeah.
Right.
You know, um, this is kind of interesting because since we're having this discussion. Um, so there are a lot of lesser creeks. In other words, they're not Blue Line creeks. But it's interesting if you, you know, ultimately, if they're flowing, they do flow into the blue lines. And um, you know, a lot of times, I I just happen to be out, a whole lot of my projects, and I see all the invasives that are growing in there and it's um, I guess the question is, do you just do it for blue lines or do you consider other lesser waterways? And maybe this was somewhere else, I'd say, eh, no, but I'm just thinking about our entire of watershed of the water issues we have, the fire issues we have, the amount of money that goes into doing weed ab- uh, weed control or abatement for um, you know, weeds.
Fuel, fuel abatement, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, I'm I'm just kind of looking at this big picture and kind of like a whole systems approach to it. And you know, if I was doing this on my own, or even if I have clients that don't live next to a Blue Line Creek, I intentionally will not specify certain plant material because there's in such close proximity to a lesser creek that I know drains to a blue line that ultimately goes to the ocean or wherever. Mostly because I can visually see what's going on and so I'm just throwing that out there as food for thought. I'm not saying that we have to do that. But personally, when I see that, I I go, why would I contribute to the problem when I don't have to, if there's an alternative? And typically, there is.
We we really seem to have gotten into this in the last meeting.
Yeah.
Talking about utilities crossing the Blue Line Creeks.
Well, that, yeah, that was one thing.
And and I'm wondering if 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 we could, if we could agree on a concept at least of saying that um, rather than saying utilities cannot cross a Blue Line Creek or a creek setback area, I think those were the names that we used, a creekside, a creekside setback area. If we said that that utilities would be allowed to cross a creek only if they did not disturb the surface of either the creek or the creekside setback areas on either side. Then people could go over the top if they want, if they could span far enough, or they could, or they could bore underneath, which was the topic of the the second uh, document that that Lucas sent us today. Uh, I, at least my my way of thinking is that accomplishes what we're trying to do here, and that is not disturb the creeks.
Yeah, I I think in theory, I would might be okay with it, but uh, um, I don't know anything about the boring. I don't, I don't know where it's been implemented or any other examples, or uh, where other communities are allowing that. So um, that, I mean, I guess I would like to know a little bit more about the allowing boring.
I I would agree with you. I don't know much about the boring either. That's why I was suggesting the concept of not disturbing the surface of the creek or the creekside setback areas. And if if a utility company that wants to cross a creek can figure out a way to do that, then they'll figure out a way to do that. And if they can't figure out a way to do that, we will still have accomplished our goal of not disturbing the natural contours of the land in the creek or the creekside setback areas.
You know, I'm wondering if there's um.
I'd hesitate to specify a particular, a particular solution, just to say, you can't do that.
Me too. I mean, I'm thinking maybe it needs, uh, I mean, it would definitely need a technical study because I'd want to know how far the water is extending down into the ground, for example.
Water table.
And and the, yeah, and um, um, and possibly some addition, you know, a higher level of review than just, you know, saying, okay, we can do it, here's our technical study, so. Uh, I mean, I just think there are some constraints that um, uh, that would make the concept um, workable to my, to my mind.
Okay, what sort of constraints?
Um, the, a technical study would definitely be required and um, you know, I mean, I don't, I think you'd need biological and hydrological study, a technical study. And I would say review by the planning commission.
And a geotech study. Maybe there's a set of guidelines that if if, you know, an applicant comes in and they do need to, for whatever reason, move utilities or add utilities, that it's maybe there's a tier, like, you know, the first choices, maybe you go over. Um, but if if for some reason they are going to bore under, that we have a list of what's required. It's almost like an environmental review, including the studies.
Yeah.
I I I would, I would like to jump in here real quick. I I kind of feel like the the pieces of that puzzle that we are going to, are gonna have you lead into a, and some sort of an environmental review, whether that be
Right.
Be in a full-blown EIR.
Yeah.
A neg deck, you've got to have some technical reports sometimes to to draw that down as well. So I think you're within that. I think that certainly is within that wheelhouse. I think we've also got to be thinking about, you know, technology continues to evolve, right? The this isn't the same discussion we've been having fifty or twenty years ago. Um, these are things that I've just recently become aware of. This boring thing isn't isn't necessarily something that's been around for extensive amount of time. So and the engineering feats just continue to amaze me.
Oh, yeah.
I'm, I mean, so that I
Requirements.
But also, I can also see the side of of being very sensitive and and careful and considerate and ensuring that there are um, parameters that are identified and clarified and and
Right.
So, yeah, absolutely. I don't know that we we should necessarily clue into that here. I think that gets drawn out um, when you end up going through the environmental review.
Yeah.
So perhaps then requiring an environmental review, if we can figure out where that is in the code. Lucas and I have talked about that. That's uh, words that are hard to find in the code, but if we required environmental review for a utility line of whatever sort to cross a Blue Line Creek or I I'm not sure I'd want to say any creek because some of them are pretty small. Uh, and already have overhead lines over them, for example. Fox Creek does in in several places along east-west streets in the city. Um, but requiring an environmental review when a utility wishes to cross a creek um, I think might, might allow us to take all these things into consideration.
Yep. So just for clarification purposes, um, for all those listening at home, um, we're talking about section ten dash two point one thousand four subsection B, correct? That's the, that's kind of the the focus of of the conversation right now.
Well, if there is, the thing is, what we say now is that all structures shall be set back a minimum of twenty-five feet from a Blue Line Creek, so there's only.
The, that's the setback area, right.
So there's only, we're in, within the city limits, we're talking about uh, two or three, I'm not sure, or maybe, maybe four, I'm not, anyway, not too many. I mean, so if we stay with that and don't broaden it to um, incorporate some of these other um, streams that were, that were mapped, I mean, they, these are for some other, I mean, they're not, this is not an official uh, mapping of the other drainage courses in the city, but that that's maybe something we would want to end up putting in the general plan or something. I I don't know, but um,
Right.
But, but, so we've got a standard, so uh, if there's something about doing something else, I would say the exception should be either printed along with A or a subsection of A. And we could say, you know, um, exceptions to allow boring or other alternatives may be considered um, with um, adequate environmental review and subject to planning commission approval. So, something very brief, but just, just.
Covered, you're right.
But.
That that could go into B in that parenthetical phrase after utilities. Instead of EG, underground or overhead, it could say, or utilities with, what'd you say, with with um, an appropriate environmental review and planning commission approval?
Yeah. Uh, I'm not um, where are you saying?
Because it's strike, it's strikeout language in the packet right now. But we could unstrike it out and change, change um, overhead or EG, overhead or underground to refer to environmental reviewer and and uh, planning commission approval.
Oh, 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 added, added as a, put that in as a second sentence.
No, you can, you can substitute it for the strikeout that says EG, overhead or underground in B.
Yeah, I read talks about utilities in B.
I see.
Yeah.
So do we now unstrike it?
Unstrike it and and change the word inside the parentheses.
Uh. Uh
Or does it have its own separate? Because you know what? If it's separated, then if there's no confusion, you know, as far as the structures, parking access, et cetera. I don't know. Um.
Because currently we say utilities shall not be constructed. Is that correct?
Yes.
I mean.
In a creek or creek side.
No, I don't want to change that. I don't
I don't either.
Within the creek or the creekside setback area.
Yeah.
How they manage to cross the creek and not do that um is is something, as Lucas has said, that technology may solve the problems for us if we just review it and look at it.
Well, um yeah, I, I I still think um something about an exception for utilities could be the last sentence under A because you're talking about the twenty-five-foot setback.
The creekside setback area, yes.
Although you're talking about the creekside setback area down below. Well
It's also in A.
Yeah.
You want to take that strike, that struck language in B and move it into A somewhere? Is that what you're saying?
Oh, I was just thinking of adding an, an, an addition, a final sentence in A and that said something about exception to the required setback um uh may be considered um through boring or other alternative um
You're saying if you do boring, then you don't have to respect the setback?
Yeah, right, because you're, you're down below. I mean, I I thought that's what we were, I thought that's what
I thought what we were trying to do is preserve the con, the natural contours of the creek and the creek set, creekside setback areas. And whether, whether the utility crossed overhead or underground, uh I wouldn't want them disturbing either the creek itself or the creekside setback areas.
Right, but if they're, if they're, if we, oh, well, I guess I thought the, I thought what we were talking about is in if utilities needed to span a creek, instead of putting their poles um uh at a, at a fifty-foot separation, twenty-five feet on either side of the creek.
Plus the width of the creek.
Plus the width of the creek. Um, that what Lucas had had come across was that, you know, an alternative method to bore under the creek within that setback area. I thought that's what we were talking about, but maybe I'm
Okay, I, I thought we were just trying to make, make the goal of not disturbing the creek or the creek set, creekside setback areas and then leave it to the utility and an appropriate environmental review to decide whether they've done that.
Or could do it.
Or could do it.
And then you had mentioned also, you would go through environmental review and planning commission approval.
Hmm.
Right.
So maybe it's, maybe if we're adding something, the exception is for you, utilities may be considered with environmental review and planning commission.
Okay, oh, there we go, okay.
Planning commission review.
Okay, okay.
Environmental and planning commission review.
Yeah, no, I, I, right.
Because we don't, as Lucas said, you know, in a couple of years, you know, who knows, there may be some technology that's, you know, the size of a a needle that can go under.
We would limit.
Of anything, really.
Okay.
We don't know.
The link I was, the link I was missing was limiting this exception to utilities. So
Well, I hear what you say too, and I, I think we need to make it very challenge, I I mean, I don't like to say this, but really it's it would be like the last ditch effort and they would really have to prove that it was not going to be harmful to do it. And then we'd have, the planning commission would have to approve it too.
And what's, and what, what language would we use to describe the goal of not be harmful? I thought that's where we were trying to head with all of this.
Well, we have to protect sensitive environmental resources. Is that adequate enough? It's already in here on, on, in letter A.
That's talking about additional setbacks from the twenty-five feet.
Right, but I wonder if we want to use some that or something similar.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I, yeah, and I, actually, you know, I'm coming, I'm, I'm coming around to agree with you, Steve. If there was an exception for utilities, it's probably better to put it in B. I
And I, I'm not sure it's really an exception per se. Um, the other structures that are discussed there cannot be constructed.
Right.
Okay, okay, so it's, it's an exception.
We're saying, these things cannot be done, but pot, you know, there might be an exception allowed for utilities if they did the proper environmental review documented. Um, no impact to any sensitive environmental resources, and it was reviewed by the planning commission.
Yeah.
That could work.
I mean, yeah.
I apologize. I'm still kind of stuck on the definition between a stream and a creek and what maps we use and consistency around what we're talking about. Because
Well, the definition, the definition of creek references um um a blue line shown on the latest seven-and-a-half-minute topographic quadrangle published by the USGS. So so that, that means
Lucas was showing.
A stream that's shown on the USGS maps. So, so what Kathy was talking about earlier, that I'm, I'm you know, if we wanted to, we could talk about broadening it to these additional um drainage channels that were mapped for some project. I mean, it's not, it's not any official designation, but
Yeah, and the drainage channels that are shown there are typically concrete or underground pipes.
Is that right?
Yeah. Look at, look at, look at toward the upper right corner there. There's a straight line and a ninety-degree bend, and then another straight line.
Yeah, I see that.
Yeah, no, those are channelized, absolutely.
Okay.
Uh, I mean, but, but
Sometime we may unchannelize some of them. I know there's
We might want to unchannelize. We might, there still might be
Right.
uh reasons for not uh spanning those with any kind of structures.
New structures.
New structures, yeah.
Well, I, I did put a link in the chat. I don't know if you guys saw it, but it's uh County Watershed Public Maps, and it's different than the USG topical map that was referenced, but it does outline uh what Ojai would look like in a hundred-year flood. Um, particularly the east end, looks like it gets pretty, it gets hit pretty hard. Um, but it's a good map to just kind of give us a general idea of where these problem areas are. Um, you know, if we're talking about creeks and streams and where are the ones that, where the ones that we really need to worry about are.
Well, I don't, I don't think it's a worry for um uh, you know, like lots of water coming down. To my mind, it's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a protection measure for um riparian habitat.
Well, yeah, sure.
That even more than flooding. Um
The major streams are going to have more water in them year-round, which means there's more life.
Well, even the ephemeral streams, um they can still have riparian habitat, and there's lots of good reasons why they should be protected. However, I mean, for right now, I would be happy with staying with the Blue Line Stream limitation, which is exactly what's being regulated right now. Um, because I think that to expand it to something like this, um
We've got to have a better definition of what to regulate.
We, yeah, we need a better idea of what these involve and
We have to further define it.
Uh, it would be a more extensive discussion, I think. Um I mean, if we don't do it before the general plan, I would say it's something we should definitely look at to as a as an expansion of the setback requirements.
And whatever project that references, whatever map, can we put that in, I mean, we, I think we need to make reference to whatever map we're talking about in the code, so people that are going to look at this in the future will understand exactly what we're talking about and they can go to that reference.
Well, the, the definition in ten-two thirty-six oh two, John, refers to the USGS seven-and-a-half-minute topo map. That's what, that's what uh Lucas was showing us before.
Right, exactly.
I guess, I mean, are you saying reference, um, you know, section two dash, two dash, ten dash two point three, uh, reference section ten dash two point three six oh two, is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, and it's subsection C, and there's a number after that too, if you want to pull, pull a citation for the word creek.
Yeah, I think that would be great. Just provide a little more clarity.
Okay.
It is, it is kind of confusing to figure out what we're talking about.
Yeah. You get all that, Lucas? In our, our extensive wanderings here along the creek? I think that was really the only uh, the only issue that we had on ten-two, ten oh four. The rest of it was pretty simple stuff.
I just had a question on G, if it's okay to ask right now.
Of course.
So it says, public access and visibility to creeks may be provided through the use of roads outside the creekside setback area. Would public access also include like a trail or a path there, or is this?
Um, yeah, I, I'm thinking a, a trail or a path has to come from somewhere.
And, yeah.
We haven't, we haven't said anything about trails or paths, I think, within the creekside setback area.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we did set, reference it in H, sort of.
Yeah, I, I saw that too.
Yeah, and in A, it says
Only encouraged.
Uh, setbacks adjacent to creekside paths or open spaces shall be measured from the outside boundary of the path or open space. So it says you can put a path in.
Mm-hmm.
Just have to be careful about where you put it.
So the part about public access and visibility, right now, we're just saying may be provided through the use of roads. I, my question was
Right, the roads are still outside the setback area, but yes.
Right, okay. And then I guess H maybe just covers my trail question.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I did have a question on um F, uh, parenz two. Concrete channels and other mechanical stabilization me, measures shall be not, shall not be allowed unless no other alternative exists, but who decides that?
Um, Lucas, what would you say, in the sole discretion of the city?
Uh, yeah, that's a really good question. It would be
We need to decide who decides.
It doesn't, it's not clear.
Yeah, it's not.
Determination. It's almost as if it's a, it's meant to be a standard, but it ends up being
Right.
Kind of an open-ended question, right? It doesn't necessarily provide you with the clarity of
Right.
Guide you with that purpose.
Right. And if the channels, if the channels are narrow enough, it's not clear that that, uh, you know, six or eight-foot-tall dirt sides is going to be stable. And I think in some cases, that's why there's concrete.
Yeah.
Like, like Fox Creek.
Yeah, but those are, I mean, those were done years ago without
Yeah, and we're talking about new building here.
Right, so with new building, I mean, typically on a project, a civil engineer, you're gonna have a geotech report, et cetera, is going to be, you know, submitting, but I'm wondering, would the public works director then also be weighing in on?
I think he'd be involved. I was, yeah.
Maybe we need more specifics to, once again, there's, you know, you would be in if the only, only option was to channelize, you would have to have gone through a study to come to that conclusion.
And convince the city engineer, right.
But, you know, and typically, the city engineer would be reviewing something that a consultant, like civil engineer and a geotech report uh that would be submitted.
So maybe, maybe at the end of, of F two, we just add comma with the approval of the city planning works director or public works director.
Yeah, or, or do we want to say that a, I don't know if we need to say this or not, but like that a thorough you know, study or review was conducted to come to that determination. And then you, then you would submit that to the city, the public works director would then review it. Um I'm, I'm not sure if I'm going in the right direction. I kind of know what I want, but I'm not sure.
Well, maybe, maybe, maybe you should say comma.
Yeah.
Um Yeah, oh, boy, to say something uh about uh
Should not be allowed.
As proposed by a licensed professional engineer and approved by the city planning works, uh, public works director? Something like that?
I think you're, yeah, that's
Because a licensed professional engineer then is going to do the job right.
Yep.
Well, it's a third party, right? So you've got someone that's uh on the outside looking in, providing kind of an unbiased approach to
Mm-hmm.
Any other alternatives that are out there that are going to
And with a reputation to maintain.
Yeah.
Uh, Commissioner Lottis, does that, does that scratch your itch?
Yeah, I, I, you know, I think a lot of times the, the public works director is the person who makes that decision.
Right.
Well, he is the city engineer, as I understand it.
City engineer, right. Um Yeah, I mean, unless, you know, maybe you want to check with them, Lucas, and that, you know, if there's any additional language about, you know, um subject to technical review or something and his approval.
Yeah.
I, I'm okay with that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have a conversation with him.
Well, let's look at uh page two of attachment A then, uh, ten-two eleven oh three. Um The only thing here that, that um that I had any question about, because it's just adding, adding specificity to the citations, was that uh parenth, parenthetical phrase, unless exempt. But if there are exemptions that are already noted in Article eleven, then I think we're covered. Just saying comply with Article eleven.
Yeah.
Any thoughts out there?
Is there anything that would be exempt?
I think we'd have to go back and look through uh, the reason that I originally, in discussions with Lucas, had suggested striking that phrase was because it was not very specific. But if there, if there are exemptions, or if there are no exemptions in Article eleven, then I think we're covered either way without that parenthetical phrase.
Yeah, unless exempt is, is kind of an interesting phrase to put after your title, chapter, article um provision that you're already going to be going to and
Right.
walking that path. Putting unless exempt is just, it's like empty.
Shouldn't be necessary.
Right.
Already look at that.
Right.
Assume that you're gonna, you're gonna pour through that information, or you should be pouring through that information.
Right. Okay, everybody all right with that then? Let's move on to page three and ten-two eleven oh four. And uh we had an exciting discussion about subparagraph D, D like dog. And I conceded feasible is kind of squishy. But I'm wondering if, if we said where possible, lot lines shall be placed at the top of slope areas. Because if, if a, if a parcel, um, does not include the top of a slope, it is not possible to put lot lines at the top of a slope.
Right.
Eleven forty daily that we talked about earlier is one such example. But I think possible is, is certainly, that, that's not as squishy as feasible, at least.
Yeah, I mean, it completely depends on, um, the configuration of a lot and where it falls on the topography.
Exactly.
You can dictate.
Yeah, um, it sounds, is it more like a, an encouraged statement or something, or?
Or recommended, or, yeah. And so, I mean, it's basically like if you were subdividing a lot, most likely.
I don't even.
This would even occur.
Yeah, it really seems to, to, um, apply to subdivisions.
Right. Because most properties are already designated with a, a property line.
Yeah.
You know, whether it's private, public, and it would really only be if the lot was being most likely.
Right, I don't think either the north or the south edges of the city, uh, of the city limits include any slopes. It's possible, uh, one piece, that, that keystone that kind of fits, um, on the north edge, that may take in a part of a slope, I'm not sure.
Yeah, so, uh, yeah, um, I, I wonder if we even need it, but.
What's what I'm thinking, why do we, why do we need it? Because if we're doing a subdivision, we're reviewing the, the location of the lot lines and whether they make any sense. I mean, that's part of reviewing a subdivision, so.
I, I agree, and I think we ought to have some basis for coming to a conclusion about lot lines if we are reviewing the subdivision.
Yeah.
We can't just say, well, this is how we think it should be. There should be some basis in the code.
So that a standard or guidelines.
I'm still not sure, what's the purpose again of having lot lines at the top of the slope areas?
Had to do with maintenance, didn't it?
I think so.
It's kind of weird, like, you have to, like, really think about this. Not really obvious, like, why are we doing this, or what?
I know, and to, um, the other part of.
Context, there's no context, I guess.
I was looking for my notes from last time, I can't find them.
Figure that is in three dash seven, that is a house that's built on a slope, like, it's in the middle of a slope. But, you know, most houses are either at the bottom of the slope, or they're on the top of the slope, or the top of the hill. So if I have a house. Lot line back, and if the fire rushes up the hill, my home, home doesn't burn up. House like this one, three dash seven, that's like in the middle of the hill, and I don't know how you would make a lot line on the top. You know, that wouldn't really matter.
I don't, I mean, I, it could, you could have your, your lot line anywhere, really, I, uh.
Right, it, if you go to, if you go to page eight of eight in attachment A, you've got figure three nine and three ten. And that shows the requirement that structures, sightlines of structures are below the top of the slope.
Yes.
They're just talking about sightlines, they're not talking about maintenance and.
Yeah, I mean, um, and we, we kind of got into this last time. Um, to me, the maintenance gets into the fuel modification.
Right.
And we don't, what, I almost thought what we needed to say was that the fuel modification, and I don't know what the requirements are that Ojai has, whether, yeah, you know, we have, I assume we have zones, ABC or whatever it is.
Right.
Whole city is one zone right now, I think.
Fuel modification, you can have, you have fewer plants near the house, and then you go out, you can have more plants and more plants.
And certain heights and water requirements.
Yeah, typically three hundred, and, but, but, um, you want the fuel modification, the required fuel modification to be contained entirely with on that property. You don't want it to go off onto somebody else's property, or up into those Padres Forest, public property. So, uh, to me, um, that's at least an aspect of slope maintenance that's, should be addressed in here.
Yeah, so the question is, is the maintenance and the, um, proposing lot line placement at the top of the sub, do they both need to be in this clause? Are we really? Because like we said before, the only way you're going to end up being able to dictate that, oh, I think a lot line should be there, is if it's a subdivision. Most likely.
And, and if, and if the parcel that you're subdividing actually goes to the top of the slope.
Right, so to me, they're almost like two separate items that, or there's a disconnect. Because the whole thing about where you're going to place this lot line is, maybe that's a separate item. And then, as Kathy was saying, the, um, the maintenance maybe refer to the landscape standards about fuel modification.
Is that in the landscape standards now? You had a lot to do with that, do you recall? Do you remember if?
Pardon me, what was the question?
I say, do you remember if, if fuel modification is in the landscape standards?
I believe it's been added.
Okay.
I know a lot of things that we proposed about a year and a half, two years ago, a planning commission have recently been added.
Well, I'd, I'd be happy to make D reserved and just take the wordage out.
I know.
Yeah, yeah, I think I'd be fine with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, what do you think about?
Or, just one question, so do in the fuel mod, whatever we say about fuel mod in the landscape guidelines, do we say that, that, uh, required fuel modification has to be came, has to be contained out within the, the property itself?
Um, I'm, I'm looking it up.
That would make sense.
I just pulled it up right now, we have, um, landscape design guidelines, which is, which is ten dash two point twelve oh eight. And then it's, it's A one I, F, which says, and it's, it's referring to plant material. And then the selection of plants from local fuel modification plan guidelines, that's one of the references. A little bit further down, it references a local fuel modification plan guidelines again. I'm not, do we have fuel? I, I, I don't know that I'm familiar with this, whether we have local fuel modification plan guidelines.
Lucas, I'm glad you brought this up, because I didn't put it in my notes tonight, but I was looking for a project that I had. And I go, oh, great, they add a fuel modification to the landscape standards, but I go, where, there, where are the guidelines? I don't think there are any.
Oh, geez.
And we could be, we could be using the counties, you know, um,
Okay.
Use it as a template for one to be developed and or, you know, Santa Barbara.
Yeah, we have enough properties on the perimeter that, uh, I mean.
And plus, the whole entire, the city has been re, um, allocated, I don't know if that's the right word. To be in a fire zone.
Yeah.
So technically, you know, we have to be looking at this. So.
And I guess, is it possible, Kathy, that it's all regulated by the county? I, I, that would be strange, but.
Well, I know, but for now, I, like, I happened to look up recently on one of my projects, and I, like I said, I go, oh, great, they have fuel modification now in our landscape standards. And then have the guidelines, but then I couldn't find a reference to what guidelines, I go, oh, who, I wanted to develop those. I didn't know about it, but I couldn't find it. So I guess what I'm saying right now is, until we, unless it's somewhere buried and I don't know about it, which is, could be very true, or po- possible, maybe the city temporarily looks at the counties to have something in place until we get one developed. I, that's just a recommendation or.
That's, that's probably on our to-do list to.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
But it goes hand in hand with the city being rezoned as high fire.
Okay, I just did, I just ran a, a search of the code for the phrase fuel modification. It's in twelve oh two and twelve oh eight.
Yeah, I just got, did it too, yeah.
Twelve oh two just defines guideline.
Yeah, it, it's.
Guidelines from a local fire authority, so it's the Ventura County Fire Protection District.
Well, then that would be the counties.
Yeah.
And they have guidelines.
Yep.
Yeah, I wish the, actually, the state of California would kind of further regulate that. If you go from different county to county, like, you know, Ventura to Santa Barbara, or Ventura to LA, they, they're different. And I think they should.
Yeah, you know, it, the, the, what could happen is that. Is, uh, you know, on one of these outlined properties, um, like above Daly Road or something, we could approve the sighting of a house. Um, and we could possibly approve it in such a location that they could not, um, they didn't have enough room to put in the three hundred foot of fuel mod as it goes up the slope. Because it was, they wanted the best view, and so they put their house in, um, near the top of the slope, and they, then they don't have room. So then, to meet the fire code requirements, they then have to, um, um, do fuel mod further up the slope off their property, or they can't comply. So I don't know how that's integrated.
Right, and you know, typically, it's two hundred feet is kind of standard for the clearance.
Okay.
But, um, depending on where you're located, but if you're in a really a very high fire zone, oftentimes what you do is you make an appointment with the fire department, they actually come out and they'll tell you, no, you need to be, because of the degree of slope, um, they'll say, no, you need to have three hundred feet of clearance. So, and then you get a sign off, so it can vary depending on where the property is and the degree of slope.
But can they still require you to do fuel modification on someone else's property?
No, it's within your property.
Okay, it's still within your property, okay.
Yeah.
That, it would seem unreasonable.
And you have to show your thirty feet, and depending on where you're at, it might go to seventy, and then usually it goes to a hundred. Unless, unless they said you needed to go further, and you can only use certain plants, and, you know, et cetera, et cetera.
I, I've seen.
You have to get it approved by the fire department.
Yeah, I've seen. Yeah, I've seen problems where that, that wasn't, wasn't occurring. I mean, it wasn't coordinated very well, and then, well, okay, so then you have it, so we approve a sighting of a house. You can't do the required fuel mod, so the fire department, what do they do? They just say, okay, well, you, you, since you can't do your two hundred feet, you can only, you, you do thirty, and it's fine.
You, well, you do it to the edge of your property.
They really cited the house so that they could do the two hundred feet.
But you know what, they're look, they're looking at your entire package, not just your landscape. So you have to, you have to actually design in your fire road access, you have to make sure you have the right clearance, you have to have turnouts.
Yeah.
Um, et cetera, in addition to the fuel mod plan. And basically, it's always the fire department's the hardest thing to get the approval, I mean, you have to make sure you do it right. So they're looking at the whole thing, and if it's a new property, they might just say, but no, you can't cite your house there. So, in a sense, it's getting.
We know that when we approve, when we do design review approval, for example, would we know that, that they couldn't get, they, they?
Well, we, we should be aware of it when we, if a project comes in and we see that they're like maxed out on the slope, and they're not going to be able, and what's the adjacent landscape, et cetera.
You, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be concerned about that.
But to get their final permits, they have to get fired.
Right, the city, the city requires a Form six ten B, I think it's called now. Used to be Form one twenty-six from the fire department before you can get a building permit.
Right, so they're going to look at, and then, you know, the designer might, the architect might have to go back and, but typically, they know that upfront, or they should.
They should.
They, yeah, you just have to keep up to date on the latest.
Okay, I won't beat a, I won't beat a dead horse.
Okay, but should we, should we, should we use that subparagraph D to talk about slope maintenance and, and fuel modification? Uh, say something about slope maintenance and fuel modification should conform to VCFPD standards?
That would be an easy solution, yeah.
John, Jake, what do you think?
Yeah, I like that, I think the nature of D is about, um, you know, mainten- maintenance and, uh, maintaining that property line, so.
And, and we'll get, we'll get away from where to put the prop, lot lines, because there's going to be a lot of impossibility in that.
Yeah, I agree. And remember on the fuel mod plans, you have to write in notes about the maintenance. In addition to what you're, you are planting in the irrigation, you have to, you know, um, say that, you know, the plants need to be cut back to, you know, no, no greater than three inches. You can, uh, basically, the state requires you have three inches of mulch. Ventura County Fire Department says you can only have two, it has to be five feet away from the house. So there's strict guidelines on fire access, availability to the water, and to the landscape and the maintenance of it, that you have to turn in on all the, the plans.
Okay.
So I think, Steve, what you said suffices.
Agreed.
Can you, can you draft some words with that, with that concept, Lucas, for D? Would that work, Lucas?
He was unmute.
Disappeared.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
He doesn't want to talk anymore.
I lost your video.
Well, he might have had something go out too, you never know.
What I was suggesting, Lucas, is that we use paragraph D to say that, uh, fuel modification and slope maintenance should conform to VCFPD standards?
Okay.
And get rid of the lot line, delete.
So you're thinking that, the, the commission's thinking that something that we add.
Put that, put that in place of the current verbiage in, in, uh, subparagraph D like dog.
Okay.
And I think we, uh, we had quite a bit of discussion on, uh, subparagraph F six, and I think that was the last of it.
Yeah. All right, yeah.
Yeah.
If I could, just bring up one point.
Yes, sir.
It's kind of interesting, um, if you look at subparagraph H, it reads, night views of the hillsides should be dominated by, should not be dominated by an array of bright lights. Lighting within view-sensitive areas should be properly shielded to avoid glare and the spill of light to surrounding areas. Low-level lighting and the use of multiple low fixtures are encouraged, as opposed to the use of fewer but taller fixtures.
Yep.
Um, the last piece seems to make sense to me, but the first piece sounds like we're talking about darks, the dark sky ordinance.
Certainly in part, but you, you can have a lot of very tall lighting around tennis courts that, uh, complies with dark sky, because it directs all the light downward, but it might still be quite visible on the side of a hill.
And also, is there a definition, or do we have somewhere in the code that says, you know, this is a defined view-sensitive area?
I've not seen that.
Uh, view-sensitive area, no, I haven't seen that.
Yeah, so, does it need to be further defined or delineated?
I, I think anything in a hillside might prob, might likely be view-sensitive.
Right. Now, maybe that's what they're referring to.
Well, as as we heard from twelve oh three San Ramon, down in the flat part of the city. Some people think it's view sensitive.
Well, you can still see the mountains from down in the flatlands, so.
Yeah.
I have a comment about G two. It says surface materials should be of rough texture to blend with the coarseness of landscaping and natural vegetation. Textured stucco, wood, brick and coarse block are appropriate. I, I kind of challenged that, um. Why can't you use a nice smooth stucco? Because I don't know about anyone else, but there's nothing worse than a bad stucco job on a house. But I'm, I'm, I don't know if this is kind of an outdated language, um.
Well, it says surface materials should be rough, smooth stucco wouldn't be, so you want to change that as well?
Well, that's what I'm referring to, like, um. Textured stucco. Does not always look great. So I don't, I just don't know if that's the right. Um.
Yeah.
Like service materials. Is it really more the color?
I was gonna say color.
It's almost the color which is in I am one rather than the texture. Cause we're saying to use like, okay, browns, blacks, grays, greens, and terracotta. Um, so maybe even really need to say, um. So I'm just wondering if we should strike that one, the surface one.
Well, maybe, maybe we could say surface materials shall blend with the coarseness of landscaping.
Mm-hmm.
And natural vegetation and just leave it at that, it's it's kind of vague.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it says we're, it says we're going to look at it, we're going to look at the surface, surface material.
But I like getting rid of that, the rough and shall and should should blend, it says, it didn't say shall, but should blend.
Good blend.
Then the same thing like it says roof materials should be of rough texture. Um, that's something else we may want to just strike. You know, um, especially now with, you know, new roofing materials being available.
Yeah, maybe they want to use metal.
Cause when you think about a rough texture roof, you're thinking about like a shake shingle, which are not allowed.
You can't do that now.
Yeah, so.
Oh, remember, this is in hillside development also.
Right, so I don't know if we should strike that and just have more about the color.
Agreed, I agree.
On G two, should we, because this is on a hillside, should we err towards not having wood as a, um. As a. Yeah, as as a surface material, I mean, I think.
Yeah.
Having stucco, brick and block, I think are great for a hillside.
Yeah.
I think wood would be appropriate.
Right, and now if you do use wood, you've got to use heavy timber.
Right.
Or treated.
So maybe we'd strike out wood and just say that we don't prefer wood on a hillside?
Cause basically it says, um, get rid of the textured maybe on the stucco, but stucco, brick. And coarse block are appropriate. So that doesn't mean you can only use that, somebody could come in with something else and say, hey, this is heavy timber construction. It's fire rated, class A, then you would say, okay.
I thought we were gonna strike that second, second sentence.
Strike the wood, strike the textured on stucco.
I thought we were gonna strike everything about that second sentence. That we're just gonna have certain materials should blend with the coarseness of landscaping and natural vegetation.
And leave it at that?
I, I thought that's what we were talking about.
Okay.
I like.
Works for me.
And then not even mention prefer, basically a preferred, most appropriate building material.
Well, I, I wouldn't object to saying stucco, brick and coarse block are appropriate.
That's what I'm saying.
Doesn't say that other things are, doesn't even say that other things are discouraged or banned, it's just those are appropriate.
Right, I think that would be good to get, strike the textured in wood.
Oh, I thought you didn't like textured stucco or coarse block.
No, we're just striking the word textured. We could just say block and and strike coarse.
Okay.
Maybe that's better.
Stucco, brick and block are.
Yeah, appropriate, and if somebody comes, like we said, with, um, heavy timber and it's class A rated and. You know, whatever other measures they've done, then sure, you know. You know, they can prove it, great. Um, but that's, we're kind of saying these are more encouraged or appropriate, you know, I think that's good.
Um, encouraged might be better than appropriate, encouraged says this is the city's attitude. Appropriate is more of a value judgment that might change from person to person.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Yeah, I'm good.
Yep. Okay, so Lucas, you got that, on the first line of G two, we're deleting B of rough texture two. And then in the second sentence, we're striking textured wood coarse in front of block. And we're putting encouraged instead of appropriate.
Got it.
This is, do we find this to be a conflict, um, D where we're talking about the slope? Um, and referring to Ventura County, uh, Fire District. And then if you go down to I, the Ventura County Fire Protection District shall review all proposed landscaping and vegetation for fire protection purposes. And we are talking about hill, this is a hillside ordinance, so is that redundant? Are we breaking it out because it's maintenance? And we, in other words, um, D is just referring to maintenance.
Maintenance and fuel modification.
Yeah, or do we lump it, yeah. Yeah, maybe you're right, okay, we'll leave it to fuel modification, yeah, okay. I'm good with that.
All right. On to, uh, ten to eleven oh five, this is not one we saw before, Lucas, what, uh.
Oh, I added, I added this one into discussion, I know we were, we were talking about it in one of these three sections, um, two weeks ago. I added this section because it, it has, we're in the box of hillside development, right? That's where we're living right now, we're, we're doing a deeper dive into.
Right.
How these, these standards are either applied, not applied, potential modifications, these are clarification. I think that, I think it's, it's appropriate for us to have that conversation regarding, uh, ten to eleven oh five as well. Whether there is an, an opportunity here for revisions, um, to what's, what's here currently. Now, the only, the only changes that you see here in these three pages, actually, I think it's more than that, it's four pages in total. Um. Is, is errata, that's really the revisions that we're seeing at this point. Um, what I'm looking for from the commission's standpoint is if there are other revisions as we look at this. At this section that are warranted, there's certainly a lot of illustration that we're seeing here. As a point of clarification, including tables. To the language that's provided here or wording. I guess I kind of invite the commission to kind of let these, these words.
Yeah.
Section kind of soak in, um, if there's any questions that you have or clarifications that pop out to you. We could discuss.
I've been through with Lucas and we found what we thought ought to be fixed.
Okay, that's good. Yeah, subsection B is interesting, it sure is anticipating, um, subdivision in the hillside.
With the cluster development, right? Yeah.
Yeah, it sounds like multifamily dwellings. Or.
It could be single houses.
I guess it could, yeah.
And it's the, it's tied with the design of the, of a. I mean, basically a subdivision, I think.
Yeah. The only places we might have subdivisions is probably up there at the top of Daily Road. Or if we annexed some more land somewhere.
Yeah.
I think the ore is a bigger ore than the area that you just first described, Sherquillis. Uh, the subdivision up in that area would be fairly difficult.
Yeah, it sure would. Okay, if, uh, if we don't have anything else, I wanted to ask, uh, Lucas, if you could talk about. You, you, you had mentioned to me separately that, um, you were having Gail put together. A lot more errata, those would be things that we will consider at the next meeting?
Yes, um, since we're on the thread of discussing, uh, potential code revisions. Um, I've had, uh, CDD staff working on another code. Update for the, uh, be an ordinance, a draft ordinance for consideration.
Opposed text amendment, yeah.
Mm-hmm. And it's roughly sixty-five sections is where I've had her stop at this point and say, pause. Let's bring it to the full commission, and it, it's errata, it's errata and minor revisions. Um, the, the question that I have potentially for the commission as we move forward here is. Do we do this in one large, in terms of all sixty-five sections? Or do you, you feel more comfortable breaking it up into, um, you know, two different, uh, discussion pieces? Uh, for, for consideration and, um. Cause I, I'll have to admit, when we, when we brought this first phase forward, this first phase forward. For the errata and minor revisions, we did it kind of progressively. Um, and that's not what this, this one would be, this would be sixty-five sections where the commission. With the exception of Sherquillis and I, have not seen, the full commission have, have not seen these, these, these errata revisions and, and minor revisions. So it's, it's definitely a mouthful, I was, I was kind of going through it the other day. And while a vast majority of it is errata, there's some, there's some points for, for discussion. Just like any of these sections that we're looking at, at crossing out and, and revising and adding new language. So it's. Lot to be desired there, I just wanted to get your, the commission's opinion as to whether we cut it in half. Um, maybe focus on, on certain sections, I. I don't know, I wanted to get the kind of thought process, uh, from the commission.
Yeah, this is not something that Lucas and I have discussed, my feeling would be. If you, if you have staff already constructing a draft text amendment with sixty odd sections. Compared to fifty some sections that we did before over the space of two meetings. That we might just take that, I'd, I'd hate to have staff have to rework. And make two draft text amendments out of it and stuff like that. But we can work partway through it and then continue the item to a second meeting.
I'm open to that as well, I, I think that would be helpful so that we're not creating, um, an additional, uh, code amendment.
Thoughts out there?
I think I lost my focus.
Oh.
Um.
I think, I think what he's saying is that in addition to these four sections, we'll have about sixty more.
I know, as soon as you hear sixty-five, the most that we have. Four sections, so we're adding to that, and on top of that, the full commission hasn't seen this. So we're starting from square one with these, but like we said before, this is a, this is a marathon, not a sprint. So we're, we're plowing through each of these sections as we go through. It's not to say that we'll do all sixty-five in one meeting, but if I'm putting it on the agenda, just know that. We'll get through as much as we all feel comfortably getting through in that one night, and then at one point, we just call it maybe.
Okay.
Hey, let's save the rest of this as a discussion piece.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it's understood, we can, we can call it when we're really, you know, losing, losing the attention span.
Yeah. Yeah, we could, we could have a.
Yeah.
We can have a discussion item for a couple of meetings.
Yeah.
And then, and then the third meeting could be when we take the vote to recommend it to the city council. Like we did at our last meeting with those fifty odd sections.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we definitely need to, to, to have looked at it carefully, each section, uh, or we're not doing our jobs.
Right. Yeah.
I think, I think the consensus, Lucas, is go ahead and bring it to us when you have it and we'll go through it. Um, as we can.
All right, sounds like a plan.
All right, let's move on to, uh, item four. Planning commission appointment to the committee to approve public art, Kappa. By the way, um, Lucas, I, excuse me, I went back into the city website looking for. Um, not agendas, but videos of prior meetings. And, uh, the last Kappa meeting that I found, I think was from twenty nineteen sometime. And there were five members on the committee.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, not three.
Um, okay, well, the, so I'm bringing this back, I'm bringing this back for discussion. Uh, I know Commissioner Nolan had kind of volunteered. But had questions for the city attorney, so went back, had that conversation with the city attorney. Uh, Nikhil and Matt, um, and I think what the, what the focus was with that question was. Uh, Vice Chair Nolan, you are in the professional field of landscape architecture. And certainly, there are lots of projects out there that you're bidding for and projects that you're, uh, getting awarded, correct? And some of those projects happen to end up being projects that fit into a category of more than three hundred thousand. And when they do that, it suddenly becomes a question of, now that it's within that realm, there is public art that's required. So, um, you fit within that mold of, of being a part of, of being paid by that applicant. To provide, um, the service that you're providing. But then there's also the, the issue or the challenge of the public art also being, um, within that same thread.
Yeah.
Location, obviously, you're not really necessarily a part of the design of that, but it's location and how it maybe interacts with, um, the landscape. So, um. The, I think what you've got to be aware of is that when you are, um, as a commissioner. And even on, if you end up being on, on Kappa here, and you are a part of that committee, that still falls into the same. Um, role of if you are being paid by that applicant, you would have to remove yourself from that. Just like you would, uh, at the, at the planning commission level as well.
And so, um, you know, I think that was the question last time was, I mean, I mean, I knew I was being paid by the applicant. But not, um. The, the.
Not with respect to the public art per se.
Right, so I think it's in, um, everybody's highest interest that I do not take the position. Um, to be on the Kappa, not that I, I'm not interested, but I do think there's a, um, conflict of interest.
Well, I'd, I'd be perfectly happy to have Commissioner Nolan take the position. And just on those rare occasions where she's involved, recuse herself, there would still be four members of the committee to vote.
And just, just so we're clear on what the Political Reform Act says, um. So the members of Kappa are now subject to the Political Reform Act. Um, the recuse, the, 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 the law basically says that you can't take part in any decision in which you have a financial interest. It's not a blanket conflict of interest rule, so.
Okay.
Um, just identifying the interest. um, just identifying the interest in, uh, financial interest and then recusing, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
Kathy, it's, it's, it's a three-member group now, correct? No longer five?
Well, I don't know, the last meeting that was videoed had five members.
And here it says, uh, at the last paragraph, the Kappa is a three-member group appointed for two-year terms.
All right.
Kathy, recuse herself, there would be two.
Two. Yeah. I'm, I'm feeling like, um, well, let's put it this way, I have a project coming up soon, and I would have to, like, be recusing myself immediately. Um, yeah, I, I'm not, like I said, I, I normally would do it, but now that I've looked at this further, I, I just don't think I'm, I'm being of the best service due to the fact that I do work on commercial projects occasionally.
Okay.
And would have to, to do that. In addition to recusing myself at the regular planning commission meeting. I'm, I'm not sure that I would be as effective as somebody else who could be there, you know, all the time.
It's really a fun committee. Somebody should step up.
I know, I, I, like I said, that's why originally I said I could be interested because I, I love bird and I,
Yeah.
But I, I see the, you know, the issues, but.
Well, I, okay, I'd be willing to do it if, if, or either be an alternate or yeah, I'd be willing to do it.
I'd vote for that.
Okay, one Kathy to the next.
Thank you.
All right, so let the record reflect that Commissioner Lottis has volunteered to be the Planning Commission's representative on Kappa.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes.
Let's move on. Pardon me?
Thank you, Commissioner Lottis.
Yes.
Welcome.
Well, let's, let's move on to item five. Director decisions. Any questions from commissioners on this list?
Um, okay, wait a minute. Uh, uh, wait a second. I do have a question about the director exemption for, um, one second. Um, okay, for the refrigerator at the Ojai Village Pharmacy. Is that, that's, that's not on the list, but we got the, um, we got your, Lucas.
Yeah.
That the decision was made. Um, so it's in the appeal period right now. Um, can you advise again, what the heck is the, um, appeal process from, for a commissioner to appeal?
It's thirteen, yeah, it's fifteen days from the date of the decision. So, it's deemed approved by the director. However, there is that, that ten or fifteen-day appeal period where the action remains stagnant until that fifteen days is up. Now, if two members of the planning commission, um, decide to call the item up, then we would, we, meaning me, and staff would schedule a, um, a planning commission meeting. Actually, if it's within the, the, um, timeframe of what is already a regularly scheduled meeting, then we have it within then. If not, then it ends up being a special meeting, um, to consider the item. But it would have to be within that fifteen-day, um, appeal period. The same thing is true with city council having the option, um, to do the same thing where two, uh, city council members could call the item up for consideration as well.
Um, so, so, uh, if I were concerned about this and wanted to call it up, is there some action we can take tonight as a commit to see, see if there's interest on the part of the commission and review, reviewing this? Or do I have to just, do I have to write an email to you?
Well, let's, let's just poll the commissioners. Is anyone else besides Commissioner Lottis interested in, in agendizing this item, which would have to take place fairly quickly?
Correct.
Um, incidentally, I, I mentioned this to my wife, who grew up here in Ojai. She said there used to be a, a counter and a soda fountain there in the pharmacy, which is no more.
Looks like that's good.
Well, I, I, again, I'm concerned about the density of alcohol sales in the downtown and, I mean, you know, it's just one after the other. There's no, there's no real tracking. There's no, um, assessment of cumulative, um, of the cumulative number of places. I think Ray Powers did get information from the ABC on the number of, um, alcohol sales that Ojai has approved. And it's, it far exceeds any other community in, I think, in Ventura County. I mean, it's like kind of crazy. And, and I, I mean, you know, I'm sympathetic to a business that's trying to make it, I guess, um, but, um, I, I just feel like we're going bonkers on alcohol sales without any real thought about it. And, um, that's, that's my, that's where I'm coming from in, in, in terms of thinking about this.
Um, these people, if they are going, if, if it's approved locally, they still have to get a state license. Is that right, Lucas?
Correct, yes, I gotta go through ABC.
Yeah, but ABC, if the local jurisdiction approves it, ABC just simply says, well, do you meet all the requirements for having a refrigerator and the off-site sales? And they don't, they don't, the, 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 they don't disapprove it at any point unless they can't meet the physical requirements imposed by, um, ABC.
Yeah, I mean, they have, they have their own guidelines and their own process. So, whether it be, um, the specific example we're looking at here where it is literally a fridge, um, on the interior of an existing retail slash pharmacy slash gift shop, um,
I'm.
Yeah, that, that's.
You know, yeah, I, I just like, well, why don't we just put a fridge in every business downtown and get it over with?
Yeah.
Where is that on the list here? I'm not seeing it. It's in.
It's not. It, it went out before.
It was emailed to us.
It went out after the, yeah, after the agenda organ release.
I think it came on Friday, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, but the main thing, if there's not inter, uh, so we need two parties to, to call it up to PC. So, we might as, i- if, uh, Chair Quillis can take a poll, that would be great.
Well, I, I would just ask, is there any other commissioner that would like to see this director's exemption agendized and, um, and, uh, considered at a meeting of the planning commission? Understanding it has to be done by fifteen days from last Friday.
Is that gonna work? Not really.
Well, it ha, it would have to be a special meeting. I mean, that's, yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be, um.
Oh.
How do we handle noticing requirements for special meetings? Do they still have, uh, city attorney, do we have, um, special noticing requirements for special meetings?
So, for special meetings, the notice requirement, um, well, okay, so, just so we're clear, the, there, to add this to the next agenda, you'd have, you'd need a special meeting to be held by, uh, going fifteen days from last Friday, um.
Twenty-eighth, uh, three, twelve days, that would be a week from Wednesday.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah, so.
Week from, uh, a week from Saturday.
So the noticing is twenty-four hours prior to a special, uh, for a special meeting.
Okay, so that can be done.
Yeah.
So that's, yeah, twenty-four hours.
Are there only two commissioners that are concerned about this? Let's put it that way.
I, I, I agree with you, Catherine.
Oh, I, I agree too. I, I, it is concerning that it would just be a, a refrigerator that would have beer and wine. Um, I, I'm just, yeah, it doesn't really make sense to me.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense to me either. And, you know, I'm not opposed that we have, you know, if there's a, a restaurant where it's like appropriate, where it's kind of like across the line of like, you know, is the pet store gonna get a refrigerator?
I wonder, you know, like, you know, public, is that what we want?
Is it kind of like, it almost gets into like a change of use in a way.
Yeah.
One, one can argue, yeah, one can argue that it's an intensification of use. That's, that's kind of the argument that you're seeing in the DE, um, where this use has not been previously analyzed. So,
Right.
looked at it from that standpoint, which is where it falls into the DE. It is not a conditional use permit. Our code is very specific about alcohol being a permitted use. It's not a CUP. I know we've talked about that through the E-Start discussion.
Right, right. Um, so, so on what basis would, wait a minute. So it's, it's design review?
Design review.
Designer, your, designer use for a use. This is like, okay, this is, yeah, I mean, this is the crazy stuff that we're, we really need to address. This is a separate issue, but we need, really need to address in the use permit tables.
Right.
And, and, and what's a CUP? A CUP is for a use. Designer view is for, um, uh, physical changes to a.
For a design as opposed to a use, yeah.
Right, here we're talking about the, the alcohol itself being introduced where it had not been previously introduced. Where you're occupying a space that would otherwise be used for retail.
Right.
That's not.
Well, I mean, it's awkward, but that's how we're handling it now. So it's.
The way in which the mechanics of it are not normal by any stretch of the imagination, but that's how we've arrived at, that's how I arrived at, at this.
And so, um, so it's, um, we just have design review standards to go by, basically.
Yeah, this wouldn't be, this wouldn't be something where we're looking at CUP findings, um, or something like this.
Okay.
Right.
But, but, but there's plenty of, um, there is, um, the judgment can, call could go either way and it would be fine on a design review.
It could, yeah. So there's, there's specific findings that have to be made, even in, even with design review.
Yeah.
It's discretionary.
Okay.
All right, so we have, how many commissioners want to call this up for a special meeting? Uh, Commissioner Lottis, Commissioner Nolan, Commissioner Trent, okay. I can't see the, and Commissioner Swift. All right, well, we have four commissioners at least that want to call it up. So, where do we go from here, Lucas?
Uh, we will be scheduling a, a special hearing on this, on this matter. So you'll be hearing from, you'll be hearing something here shortly from, from me.
And we think it'll be next Wednesday?
Say that again?
And we think that it'll be next Wednesday or be by next Wednesday.
I may need to get a poll to make sure that you're all available.
Okay.
For, for the days that we're, or the day or days that we're looking at potentially having it, so.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Any other, um, discussion of director's decisions? Then let's move on to item six. And Lucas, you will let us know when we have the special meeting.
Yes.
All right, item six is tentative agenda. Um, and I see for our next meeting, um, Okane Sushi Restaurant. What's the, what's the issue there?
So, Okane Sushi is relocating across the street, um, to what's now a vacant building, um, at eight thirty-two East Ojai Avenue.
That's, oh, that's eat to live? Or live to eat or something?
Yeah, uh, live to eat.
It's next.
Yeah, this, you're talking about the former location, right?
The, the former Chinese restaurant?
Yes. So, that location is now, um, being proposed to be a sushi restaurant. They would have outdoor, um, outdoor seating, patio. Uh, there is a parking study that's being included with this, parking analysis that's being included with this and reciprocal agreement. Um, that would all be included with this package. It's identified here for the sixteenth. However, I was just looking at my agenda. We are not quite there with the item. It will be going, um, on the first meeting in October where we can get, um, get it scheduled for public hearing. But I wanted to put it on here just to make the commission aware of it at this point, that it is gonna be coming up here pretty shortly.
Okay, and you said there's a shared parking study? There was one when they were in the old location. They were sharing parking with a veterinarian or something.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, is it also required in the new location? Cause there's about, uh, eight or ten parking spaces there.
Yeah, the problem is, is that they're increasing the square footage of the building. And by doing that, they, uh, the parking count doesn't suffice for those, for those parking spaces to the rear.
Okay.
They've gotta find parking somewhere else.
Got it, okay. And, uh, general plan update and I presume we'll be also talking then about, um, more Title X stuff on the sixteen, or on the eighteen, sixteen.
Sixteen.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, the sixty-five sections you were, we were just talking about previously, I can see that holding nicely into the discussion.
All right. Any other questions for staff?
I have a, a technical question, if I may ask. Um, I'm gonna have to recuse myself. I'm not in one of these upcoming meetings in the next couple of weeks. And because we're doing it on Zoom, I just wanted to find out ahead of time how that will function so I can be prepared and not slow down the meeting at all.
Recuse yourself on a particular item in a meeting?
Yeah, and because we're doing it on Zoom, I will technically, you know, I used to, we'd leave the room and it'd shut the door and somebody would come when it was over and say, come on back in. So I don't know if it's something where I, um, go on mute, I leave the room and you text me when it's time for me to come back. I, I'm just wanting to make sure it was seamless and not an issue. Um, so I'm asking ahead of time.
Sure.
So, so.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Um, again, I, I, again, we're all in kind of new territory with.
Exactly.
Um, well, I would say this, the Zoom and what we're having here is a virtual meeting. And so the meeting itself is confined to the participants in the meeting and the Zoom itself. So,
Right.
I think logistically, it would be, you would declare the, the recusal and then you, or you would, you know, you would exit the, the, uh, the Zoom meeting entirely. And then we would let you know and then we'd let you back. And then you would, I think, I assume you could click the same link and re, re-enter back into the same Zoom meeting.
Okay, so basically I'm, I'm actually physically checking out of the meeting. Maybe you'll call or text me or email me and say, come on back and then I'll reconnect.
That's, I think, the safe, the best way of doing it because I, I, I've thought about perhaps having you mute or, or, you know, muted or, um.
Just mute her.
Like maybe spying.
Yeah, well, that's, that's the thing is that I don't, it's, I, I'd want it to be as consistent as we do
Okay, good.
in the practice of when we're all here.
Okay, good. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I, I agree with the city attorney that pulling yourself away from the meeting is no, is no different than you physically moving and leaving the meeting.
Right, so I'll just check out and turn it off, leave the meeting officially. Okay, good.
Uh, I will probably get your, get your phone number and we could
Okay.
text you and you could, you could re-enter.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then we're down to the best item of the night, city council liaison.
Wait, before we go to the city council liaison, um, I wanted to just identify in the pending future agenda items. I have on here, um, the review of the policy, which is six point four, which is the director's exemption process of minor projects from planning commission review. which is the director's exemption process of minor projects from planning commission review. I know when we had last talked about this and had a pretty heavy conversation about it, it was more about the appeals, but just about the overall process regarding DEs. Um, I wanted to let the commission know that, that certainly I am, I am looking into the matter, looking at an appropriate process, um, potential revisions. And just to let you know that this, this certainly is going to be coming back. It's just a matter of figuring out the correct mechanism and process for that. So I'm still looking into it. Um, but I don't want to let you know that I hadn't forgotten about it. So it's still on, on my radar.
Okay. I think that's great. I, I would ask, uh, I, I welcome that review. And I would ask that, um, as a part of closing out that review, that we figure out a way to make this policy, this administrative policy, and perhaps others as we come across them and have issues, um, be more readily available to the public. And I'm not sure whether that means a link on the city website or a citation in the code in the appropriate place. I don't know what that would, what that would comprise. But I think we, one of the problems that, that we ran into the first time around with an appeal was that the rules for doing the appeal, which were in the administrative policy, were not obvious to the public. So if we can fix that while we're at it, that would be great.
Okay. Understood. All right. Thank you.
And Souza?
Okay. So, um, first of all, thank you for be, being willing to hold a special meeting on the alcohol issue. And, um, I think that's very important. I don't know if staff can provide an analysis as part of that as, as to what's going on in the city limit as a whole and even beyond the city. But I, um, I'm gonna do a little investigating on my own so I can have some figures like, uh, Ray Powers did provide a year or two ago. I think just to give it context, you know, of our, what our concern is. And then, um, I, I'm glad that, um, Commissioner Lottis brought up the concern about the mansionization. I don't know that I ever heard that exact word used like that in Ojai. And that was a concern going back to when Los Arboles was developed. There were planning commissioners concerned about that dairy, uh, thing at the time. And, um, I don't like to, you know, point the finger on things that have already happened. But this is, is not a personal thing to anyone living, uh, who happens to be living on the corner of Lyon and Eucalyptus. But that, I think, is an example of a mansion in a neighborhood. You know, does, it doesn't fit in. You know what I'm talking about? The corner of Lyon and Eucalyptus? Doesn't fit in.
Right out to the property line, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
That's where the, uh, rule about the planning commission ruling on two-story residences came from.
Yeah, yeah. So I think you handled it really well. I was really impressed with the discussion and adding, uh, that extra whereas, though I thought that was excellent. You know, to show how you justified approving this. You know, I thought that was great. Um, oh, the other thing, uh, that comes to mind every time you're discussing the creeks and flooding. I think a lot of people who are new to Ojai just do not realize just the level of flooding that has occurred in the valley. And then I started wondering why did I, because houses were swept away. And I started, when, like, you know, um, how is it that houses close to creeks were allowed to be built? There, I mean, I'm thinking, the things I'm, I'm thinking of, uh, Grand Avenue. Um, so that's outside the county, but somebody permitted a house to be built where it could be swept away, obviously. So I think that you're, you know, considering things much more carefully, which I appreciate. Um, and then, uh, the other thing that I just wanted to announce and, and, and maybe Commissioner Nolan could elaborate, um, we did get a, a press release from Caltrans and, which makes us believe that the perm, that the perm, we're, I'm still waiting. How do I say this? Kathy, help me out. My brain.
So basically they made the announcement that the, the ATP project and the Go Ojai, which is the pilot project, are gonna go through. But the actual permit hasn't been issued and I think they're hoping to get it in the next couple of weeks. So, I mean, that indicates we got, we, it's coming. It just, the permit isn't here yet.
Yeah. But so we anticipate that, uh, in, in, we have to have those, what do you call those things? Up, up four weeks in advance? The, the data gathering device?
Oh, right. The, the, it's like a tracking device.
Traffic counters, that sort of thing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That has to be put up at least four weeks before we actually start the demonstration project. But in any case, next Wednesday at eleven o'clock is another, uh, community meeting on Zoom where any questions can be, we'll, I'm sure we're gonna be asking a lot of questions. Now that it's, it, you know, more on the horizon.
This is the whole Maricopa Highway in the area of Nordoff High School.
Yes. That's for the Go Ojai, uh, pilot project. Um, the meeting next, uh, week is.
Yeah. So, uh, you know, for the, for reducing what, what it's gonna look like if we reduce the, the four-lane highway to two lanes, protected bike lanes and parking and, you know, and the trees won't go in, you know, everything won't, it won't be identical to the final project. But this demonstration project will inform what works and what doesn't work when we actually, um, implement the final project.
Right. So people can actually test it out and you'll be allowed to, um, provide feedback in addition to what, uh, Suz was mentioning earlier, whether they're gonna do like car counts and pedestrian and bike counts, et cetera. So people will be able to, to comment. And I, I think the cool thing about it is it's temporary, you know, test it out. Let's just see if it works or not. And it allows, um, you know, if we need to make any adjustments for the final project, it gives us that information to do that. If something's working or not working.
Thank you. That's, that's all I have for right now. I'm working on a lot of things behind the scenes, but that's all I have to report. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you very much, Souza. Um, anything else from any Commissioners? I, I want to thank you again all for your diligence in going through the material that we've covered tonight. This is, this is pretty heavy weather we're trying to sail through here. And, uh, and there's more to come, but I appreciate how you have all dug in to look at and comment on the things that we're considering. So thank you very much. And with that, I'll adjourn the meeting at nine thirty. Oh, yes, Lucas.
I have one more thing.
Yes.
Um, I wanted to make the full commission aware of something. Um, the, the upcoming city council, um, agenda that's gonna be coming out here either tomorrow or the, or the day after, I think tomorrow actually, is going to include a public hearing item. And that is gonna be for six oh three Lyon. Uh, six oh three Lyon has appealed, uh, this planning commission's determination, um, as a compromise to what I had, um, revoked originally, which was that zoning clearance back in, which was issued back in March, um, and revoked in error. Uh, so I wanted to make you all aware of that. And that is, that is going before the city council on the eighth, uh, this next Tuesday.
So we'll all be watching with interest and may decide to, uh, check in and speak, I guess.
Uh, yeah, you are, you are the public at that point and not, not Commissioners, so.
Yep. Okay.
We'll be in the hot seat.
All right. Then with that, at nine thirty-nine, I will declare the meeting adjourned and thank you all again.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Bye.
Bye.